Open your eyes to a new Grenada. One that is poised to take off. A Grenada at the tip of the spear that leads into the future. Our vision for Grenada is holistic and our actions are intended to be intentional and planned. People are the heartbeat of this nation. Our society must allow them to aspire and advance. We shall place people at the centre of Vision 75 by prioritising five main pillars of development that will create a prosperous and equitable society and a vibrant economy.
Health. Any vision for the future must start with our people, a healthy people. We intend to thrust the health sector to the forefront as an integral part of holistic development. The equation is quite simple. Healthy citizens equals productive citizens and productive citizens equals more economic growth. Health is more than hospitals and clinics and that is why we intend to create a medical ecosystem. Nestled on the border of St George and the virgin parish of St David, land has been allocated for the development of a medical campus. This campus will integrate a teaching hospital equipped with cutting-edge technology, specialist medical clinics, pharmacies and modern retirement homes, but it is beyond staying healthy. We want to use health as the catalyst for creating a healthy economy. We intend to link healthcare with tourism and agriculture, taking advantage of our therapeutic environment and positioning our island as not only a place that offers top-notch care and medical procedures, but as a rejuvenation destination and a producer of bespoke medical products with our herbs and spices.
Energy. Imagine a Grenada whose energy sector is aptly diversified to take full advantage of our elements, turning our seasons of sunshine, coastal breeze and geothermal energy into electricity to propel our homes and economy. Our vision is practical, reduce our dependence on fossil fuels. This goes beyond the illustrious dream of saving the planet. It's more personal. We want to make life easier for our citizens. A diversified energy sector allows our people to do more and when our people do, Grenada grows. Our aim by 2035 is to reduce our dependence on fossil fuels by 40%. The effects of this transition will be felt by every Grenadian. Imagine hotels operating with reduced electricity costs, businesses, schools, hospitals. The spill-off effects are immeasurable. Imagine our burgeoning agro-processing industry finally able to thrive. Imagine regular Grenadians with more disposable income all because of lower electricity costs.
Agriculture. A nation must be able to feed itself. Economic development is important, but it is impossible without food security. Our vision includes the revival of our agricultural sector. Imagine a Grenada able to support its citizens with local produce. Imagine a Grenada that imports less. A Grenada with our spices replanted and production restored to pre-hurricane Ivan levels by 2035 and 2045 respectively. Imagine a Grenada where we end the exportation of raw nutmegs and cocoa and we convert all nutmegs, maces, paracarbs and cocoa into processed and manufactured food, spices, condiments and chocolates. Imagine a Grenada that meets the demand for fresh locally-produced chicken and end our dependence on imported chicken by 2040. A Grenada where our sons and daughters embrace careers as fisherfolks and agro-processors as their first-choice occupations. In this vision, our citizens leverage these sectors to establish flourishing small and medium-sized businesses while our tourism and healthcare industries create a substantial demand for their products.
Education. Imagine a Grenada where citizens are well-trained, professional, efficient and conscious. A Grenada where people understand how to integrate and function with technology. A Grenada where citizens are eager to solve their own problems. This Grenada is not too far away. We want to empower our citizens through meaningful education. Our education system must produce the ideal Grenadian, Caribbean and global citizen. Every citizen must have basic knowledge of civics and Grenadian history. Skills must be prioritised. As the world changes, so too must our citizens change and equip themselves to function in competitive markets. Technology will also be at the core of the learning experience. Digital literacy must be paramount as we step into the future.
Environment. Our development must not be at the expense of our environment. We must be the custodians of our pristine surroundings. We envision a Grenada where citizens have a deep appreciation and respect for the environment. Our culture and our behaviour must adopt contempt for littering, polluting and illegal sand mining. Envisage a Grenada where land use is maximised. Our island is small and we need to be strategic in how we use it. Within the next 25 years, Grenada will be well-zoned.
Society. Imagine a society that reflects our collective aspirations. Imagine a society with institutions that reflect a Grenadian reality and operate as citizen-centric entities. A citizenry with high and ever-elevating levels of consciousness and patriotism and a mindset that supports national development. A citizenry that has shifted away from limitations towards possibilities and opportunities. A shift away from inaction and towards solutions. Vision 75 is not a dream. Vision 75 is a plan. A plan that requires the support of every citizen, both home and in the diaspora. Vision 75 is a process, one that may not be simple. But just as we navigated the last 50 years, we must create a Grenada at 75 that we can be proud of, that our children can inherit. Vision 75. A vision of the next journey that our people should take to create our future.
Welcome to Grenada, the spice island of the Caribbean, known for its breathtaking beauty, vibrant culture and now a beacon of medical excellence and innovation. The government of Grenada proudly presents the new Hope Vale Climate Smart Medical City. Located in the parish of St David, this 84-acre medical city is set to revolutionise healthcare, education and tourism, not just in Grenada but across the OECs. At the core of this transformation is the new state-of-the-art smart research hospital, designed with patient-centred care and community engagement in mind. It will provide value-based specialist care, innovation healthcare solutions, industry-leading medical training and cutting-edge research. From advanced medical oncology and reconstructive plastic surgery to physical therapy, fertility treatment, stem cell therapy and more, the medical complex and annex will offer a wide range of specialised services ensuring comprehensive care for all. Adjacent to the hospital, a large medical complex will house private sector and grant-funded services, including a biotech incubator and accelerator fostering medical and technological advancements. The complex also conveniently features a four-star luxury hotel, providing comfortable accommodations for recuperating patients, individuals receiving outpatient care, family members and visitors alike. Staff and student accommodations will be located within the medical city, providing easy commutes and an elevated team member experience. With dedicated retirement homes alongside beautiful private residences for doctors, hospital executives and returning nationals, the complex ensures a holistic community-centred environment for all. Sustainability is at the forefront with a solar plant providing renewable energy and supporting Grenada's commitment to eco-friendly initiatives. A vibrant array of restaurants, shops and entertainment facilities along with fitness and wellness centres will create a lively and engaging community atmosphere. Beautifully manicured parks, walking, running and biking trails will offer serene spaces for relaxation and recreation, enhancing the wellbeing of residents, patients and visitors alike. Seamlessly connected by a well-designed road network and ample parking ensures easy access to all facilities, providing an efficient experience for everyone. The Hope Vale Medical City will be a cornerstone of Grenada's medical and retirement tourism industries, attracting individuals worldwide with its promise of high quality in an environment unmatched in beauty and tranquility. Located just 20 minutes from the capital St George and the airport, Grenada offers an English-speaking, safe and scenic Caribbean destination conveniently accessible from North America, Europe and the Latin American region. The Hope Vale Climate Smart Medical City is not just a project. It is a vision for the future, a commitment of excellence to the people of Grenada, a beacon of hope for generations to come as we move Grenada forward.
July 1st, Hurricane Barrel has given us a very dramatic blow. We lost about almost all of our cultural produce on the ground. And so, we continue to make sure that we can incentivise you to make sure that you can basically have hope to go back and fail. Our government is behind the farmers of Grenada. We want to make sure we can feed ourselves when the day comes out.
The government have spent approximately $34 million into this programme. So we're speaking about direct injection of cash into your hand. So for many of you, you would have received a payment of $4,005 and some other persons $9,000.
The best possible way to utilise those monies is to put back some in the land. Alright? So I want to kindly ask of you each to make a special effort, put back some of the land.
These checks, we believe, will go a long way in assisting you from an income support basis, notwithstanding the difficulties that you had to endure during Hurricane Barrel. But I think most of you have proven essentially that you are very resilient and that you could rebuild and you could continue feeding the nation, which is most important, because all of us have to eat at the end of the day.
Because if you manage this well, it can help you to multiply your farms and to increase your productivity. Increasing productivity means a healthier nation and the wealth and health of our nation depends on the contribution that you make towards developing the agriculture sector.
It is very important and it has been important for us that we take agriculture very seriously in terms of helping our farmers build their resilience. And so this morning's handover speaks to that. That is not only when good times we are there to support and we are there to subsidise, but in the bad times as well, this government is committed to supporting you, the farmers.
We do so with a deep sense of achievement and pride as a government. Hurricane Barrel affected over 85% of the agricultural sector and therefore seriously impacted food prices. And so we hope that production will be back to normal very, very soon and as a result, prices.
We know that Barrel passed and the agricultural stock may be more than 80% within St Andrews and by extension, but the constituency and by extension, St Andrews were destroyed and our farmers generally are the breadbasket they provide for us. So without farmers, we cannot, we do not have food to eat. And so we are happy that we are able to give back so that you can replant and you can take care of yourself.
The onus is on us as a people to produce more, to feed ourselves better, more reliably, so that we don't have to import every single thing that we need. And that is why you are so important and that is why you are so valuable to us as a people. My colleagues have talked about how importantly this government values, I almost said education, but values agriculture.
I am proud of the Ministry of Agriculture, just as how I'm proud of you, the farmers, who continue to provide for us, provide food for us on the island. And I want to say that as a government, we are committed to the development of agriculture in this country.
And I think that now we have an opportunity for something good to happen. And what is happening here is something, is a step in the right direction. I heard a farmer say this, one of the first time his name was ever been called for something from the government. And all this is a step in the right direction. But what I want to urge going forward, I want to see a relationship between the farmers and the government. A relationship where farmers can feel more appreciated than ever before.
Your work is highly appreciated, very much highly appreciated. I want to say to you all that you are indeed extremely important and see yourself as being important. Let nobody run you down. See yourself as being important and continue to do the good work for our country and for our people.
I hope you appreciate that when it comes to agriculture, that this government is working and delivering on its commitment to make agriculture a priority. The $34 million plus that has been spent in agriculture to you, the farmers, to ensure that you can get some cash injection while you go back into the land and to ensure that you get an opportunity to go back into the land is certainly in recent history, probably the single largest transfer of direct cash to farmers by any government, certainly since Hurricane Ivan, that is 20 years ago. So we appreciate. The landing Grenada has not gone anywhere. Yes, there's a lot more buildings. But if we do not take our food security, if we do not take agriculture, if we do not take farming seriously, this country will go nowhere. We have to make sure that we can feed ourselves as much as possible.
Today is a special day for all of us. If you recall on July 1st, we had a welcome visitor called Barrel who devastated our agriculture sector as well as our housing. We as a government then said to you that we are going to build back the houses that were destroyed by Hurricane Barrel. And so, Honorable Andy Williams, Minister for Mobilisation, Implementation and Transformation, was given a task to do just that. I recall very well that some $15 million was given over to that ministry to basically build back better the house that was destroyed by Hurricane Barrel. And so today, we have at least the first two houses that was built back under this programme that we can now deliver to the homeowners. I know that there is a lot of other houses have been built at the moment and there will be a time when we're basically able to hand over the keys to many others.
This moment is more than the construction of buildings. It is about providing stability, dignity and a fresh start to those who will soon call these houses their homes. Housing is not just a basic need. It is a foundation for stronger communities. A safer and security home gives family the opportunity to strive, space for children to learn and grow and to build a brighter future. To the new homeowners, congratulations on this well-deserved milestone. Today, as we hand over the keys to you, to your home, we want you to take care of it with pride and let it be a foundation for success in your lives.
Mr Glasgow, I present you with the keys for your home and it is my pleasure to do so as the Minister for Housing.
Thank you. On behalf of myself and the governments of this country, I say a wealthy thank you.
I am pleased to present these keys to you and your family on behalf of the government of Grenada. I do hope that with this new blessing that it will continue to improve your lives and the lives of your family. Congratulations and all the best.
On behalf of Mr Alfred Carnwell, I would like to say a special thank you to the government of Grenada and to mobilisation, implementation and information. Thank you very much.
They said if we paid the pension, the economy will mash up. It will be doom and gloom. It will be dark days. The pension was paid by November of 2022. Up to yesterday, I met a retired police officer in River Sally who can't stop thanking the people and the government of Grenada for paying him the pension that he otherwise would not have had. Say it louder, say it louder. But it's not just the retroactive pension. It's all of those who are now working, who are public officers, who know that if they retire in a year or two or three years' time, that they too will get their pension. We said we will do it and we did it. No fanfare, no beating up our chests, simply doing what is right for the workers of Grenada. And so I will stay on that team for a little while, the workers of Grenada. There are approximately 3,000, give or take, contract workers right now, employed by the government of Grenada. That doesn't include the money workers, who do not have any pension from the government of Grenada. And if their status remains like that, they will retire with no pension. In some cases, they were classified as contract for service workers, which meant that the government and which means that not even NIS was being paid for them. Let me repeat, not even NIS was being paid for them. We have committed that come the 1st of October, we will be going to parliament to enact legislation to create a new pension scheme for these workers to ensure that they have the opportunity to have a pension. And I want to be clear. The established workers who have the pension established by the constitution, we are not interfering with you. You have your pension, we restored it, we paid the retroactive and we will continue to pay. But that is a pension that you do not contribute to. That is a pension that is funded entirely by the taxpayers of this country, you, me, all of us. We cannot continue in a situation where you have 3,000 persons who don't have pension. Because when they retire, what will happen to them? So we have to create a system that allows them to get the pension. That system is going to be a pension where they contribute and the government contributes. And we are saying anyone who is hired by the government thereafter has to come on to the pension system where they contribute, the government contribute. And when you retire, you can have your pension. If you move from the government to the private sector, you could take your pension with you. If you want to exit the government service, you can get the contributions you have made to that pension for yourself. Because I want you to understand something about the current pension system. It has certain rules. You have to work by a certain length of time before you could get it. So if you have to work for 21 years and you want to leave at 18, you cannot leave because you will not get the pension. So we could be honest, some of us grind it out and grind it out only because we want to make sure we get the pension. But we have to create flexibility. So the new pension scheme will ensure that if you want to leave, you can leave and you can take your contributions with you.
We have also finalised, we also finalised all of the outstanding collective agreements with all of the public sector unions without, without anybody having to march in the street, in the streets and get burnt in the sun and wet in the rain. As Mr Grimes said, it was done in a spirit of mutual respect. So we have, we gave the best increases according to the unions, not me say. They said best increases ever, best fringe benefit package ever. In addition to that, we paid the salaries that were improperly docked from teachers and other public servants. And we resolved the 40-year-old pension problem by paying retroactive pension and gratuity. And might I remind, only recently I saw an image or a video of the former Prime Minister addressing the nation saying this would have cost us $465 million. That was a lie. It cost us $75.1 million to pay retroactive pension. Now, we hear a lot of comments bandied about these days and people trying to conflate the issues. We are also embarking, we have started actually regularising workers. As a matter of fact, we promised the workers that in the first phase of regularisation, we will do 300. We did 298 in the first phase. So much done, so much more to come.
Today, we're in St Patrick's, we're doing distribution.
Today, we're in St. Patrick's, we're doing distribution, and the program really is targeted at persons who would have lost their income as a result of Hurricane Barrel. So the persons you see behind me are the ones that would have qualified for the program, and they're here today to collect their, their funds. We did the program in the north of the island, the parishes that were affected, as well as Karakua and Pitti-Matnik. So we did St. Patrick, St. Andrew, St. John, St. Mark, and as I said, Karakua and Pitti-Matnik. This is our actual seventh, our, sorry, our second payout. We did January and February last month, and we're doing March now. The program is for six months, because it is income support, and it is as a result of the hurricane, so it really is a short time period, just to help persons really get back on their feet as a result of what they would have lost during the hurricane. So six-month period, we end in June. Our application phase is already completed, so we're not taking any more applications at this time. The persons that would have qualified, they receive the assistance for the six months, and then the program closes off.
My name is Beverly Charles Cedric of Mon Craven. Well, Hurricane Barrel passed, and it affected me by killing my chickens and whatnot. Well, happened the bringing that relief, which I didn't know, but my neighbor told me about it. I go down there and I talk to them people, and they tell me they'll help me. So wait until March, and called me and tell me to check the revenue office, and I did come, and they give me a little money, which I really, really appreciate. I'm really glad for it, because it helped me do a lot, which you'd have to take some time, if I was to do it on my own like that. And what they're doing there, and this, I could say, really helped me. And I thank them very, very much, the government, and everybody who behind that, I thank them very, very much for that.
I hold on the radio, they have a burial relief thing for people, so I go, and then they call me, so then, it take a little while, but they call. But I feel greatly for them, happy, because it will bring me a good way, a far way, and then I thank the people who donated the money gratefully.
We are well on our way to relocating the police headquarters. We didn't rent this time. We bought what is called the flow or the lime building on the Carinage with taxpayers' money, and we are renovating it, and we are going to be giving the police headquarters a permanent home. I'm relatively young, but all my life, I think the police headquarters has been up on the fort. It suffers from the same problem that the hospitals suffer from. One-way, narrow road, inaccessible, limited parking, et cetera, et cetera. It is now on the Carinage. It is now on H A Blais Street, because the building runs from the Carinage to H A Blais Street. It is a big, spacious building that is easily accessible, whether by bus, private vehicle, or by foot, and so, or by sea, because it's on the Carinage as well. So we expect for most of the heavy construction work to be completed by the end of June, contractor, if you're listening, end of June. And we expect for the police to begin the necessary moving over the next two, three months into the building. And we've done it within the two years that we got into office. You may not know this, but the police were required to move a long time ago for the tourism enhancement, competitiveness enhancement project on the fort. We are renovating the fort, and that was one of the projects that was at risk of being lost because of the low implementation rate. So Mr. Bosspipe here, MIT, unclogged the pipe, he unclogged the pipe and made sure that the project is being delivered. And the benefit of delivering the project on the fort is that the police has a brand-new headquarters delivered again within record time.
We had a good turnout today. We had people from the mainland coming up to Karakua and Pitti-Matnik. This morning, we sent a group to Pitti-Matnik, and now we are in Karakua here also. So we are going to attack the boat areas, the boat places at the same time. So we are at the Red Tree Road now, and we have people cleaning from, we will go down to Hillsborough, and also up. And the plan is to go towards Hillsborough, which is the town, to clear the streets and so on. After we finish, we are going to head into Dover, top Dover and bottom Dover, and we are going to do the same thing. In Pitti-Matnik, it's a little more simple, they are going to meet up and just start cleaning, go right through. So both teams are what we had, the bus association here, we had people from Red Cross, and so here, we have people from different constituencies here. And we are just thankful for the turnout today, and that everyone is so interested in seeing Karakua, you know, be restored. So it's a pleasure.
While the cleanup is happening, aid will be distributed. While aid and cleanup is being done, the rebuilding process will start. And as I was seen to Prime Minister Jew and scary not long ago, opportunity has presented itself for us to rebuild better, stronger, and smarter, smarter in terms, you know, in terms of climate resilience, smarter. Because we will continue to get more hurricanes. The hurricanes are going to become even more stronger, taking the climate crisis that we, that we're experiencing. So certainly, we will, we will, we will, we are going to rebuild better and stronger. When Karakua, when we finish rebuild Karakua, it's going to be a different, a different place, a better place for all. We want Karakua, Karakua and Pitti-Matnik to be the first, the first blue or green, the first climate smart island in the region, and might be the world. So we have to build back with purpose, with vision, with foresight, and taking into consideration the future.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. May I ask you to stand as we welcome God's presence and pay homage to our beautiful island, Grenada. I now invite Ms. Tilon Mitchell to lead us in prayer, following which we'll have the playing of the national anthem, and I invite you to remain standing. Thank you.
Pleasant good afternoon to everyone. Let's pray. Most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to be here this afternoon, God. We invite your presence amongst us today, Father. And we pray that you will come, that you will have your way. We declare it is not by might, it is not by power, but it is by the Spirit of a living God. And so God, let your will be done here this afternoon. We pray for wisdom, we pray for order, we pray for understanding. Most so God, we pray, Lord, that you will come, and that you will demonstrate your power, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Tilon. Remain standing for the national anthem of Grenada. Thank you, Mrs. Ramdani would be proud. Ladies and gentlemen, you may have your seats. Honorable Deacon Mitchell, Prime Minister of Grenada, members of the Cabinet of Grenada, Chairman and members of the Technical Working Group, Grenadians Home and Abroad, and Grenadians of the Great, the Great South, Grenadians of the Great South. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This evening, you have an opportunity to engage your government in meaningful dialogue, share your ideas and perspectives, so that all of us can work together, work towards solutions that will shape our future. My name is Neela Etienne, Press Secretary in the Office of the Prime Minister, and I am pleased to welcome all of you to the first national town hall meeting for 2025, the first of a series of town halls for 2025. This town hall meeting series presents an opportunity for us to come together, to discuss the issues that matter to all Grenadians, both home and abroad, matters that affect our communities and our country, Grenada. Today, we will report on some of our major achievements for 2024, and give an overview of our projects for 2025. Following the first presentation by the Technical Working Group, we will invite members of the audience to ask questions related to the presentation. Then we will invite the members of the Cabinet to make presentations. This evening, I am reminded of the theme for the 2025 budget, towards Vision 75, Grenada Resilient and Rising. Ladies and gentlemen, this evening, you have an opportunity to engage your government in meaningful dialogue, and again, I repeat, to share your ideas and perspectives. At this time, I'd like to introduce the members of the Technical Working Group, who will make the first presentation to you this evening. The chairman is Mr. Nazem Burke. Deputy Chairman, Mr. Rodney George. And we have Mr. Richard Duncan, Ms. Siobhan Spencer Joseph, and Dr. Raymond Nurse, who is out of state at this time. I'd now like to invite the Chairman of the Technical Working Group to present on Grenada's oil and gas opportunities and potential, Mr. Burke.
Thank you very much, Madame Chapusen, our Press Secretary, Honorable Prime Minister, members of the Cabinet of Grenada, members of Parliament, ladies and gentlemen, sisters and brothers, all. I want to begin, first of all, by expressing our sincere thanks on behalf of the Technical Working Group, Grenada's Hydrocarbon Technical Working Group, expressing our thanks to the Prime Minister and his Cabinet for giving us what we consider to be a very, very exciting opportunity, an opportunity to explore. Not very many people get the opportunity to explore. Christopher Columbus was a very fortunate man, and today we feel as excited as he perhaps felt back in 1492. Ladies and gentlemen, sisters and brothers, today we want to talk a little bit about oil and gas exploration and development. And the theme of our presentation essentially is this, getting to know our true potential and doing something about it. We have chosen that topic as a way of presenting today because of the historical context in which we have been asked to speak to you. While historically, Grenada has relied very, very heavily on fish, you might say, agriculture and tourism as the mainstay of our economy, all of the governments that have run this country have had this desire to diversify our economy, to have more than two sectors upon which we depend for our livelihood. And this desire is not just born out of some fanciful desire to have more or more sectors, but is born of the very sober realization that our country is very vulnerable. We are vulnerable to a number of external shocks. We say sometimes, when the large countries sneeze, we catch the cold. When their economies go into trouble, into distress, our economies go into distress. So we suffer from those external shocks. But even much more, we suffer from natural disasters. Does, you know, whether it's hurricanes, or floods, or earthquakes, or volcanoes, one kind or another, we are in a very vulnerable area and suffer from a lot of these natural disasters. And because our economy is so small, in a matter of one, in a matter of hours, one major catastrophe, in a matter of hours, can take away from us our lives, our incomes, medicine, food, shelter, water, and all of the essentials of life. So we are in a very vulnerable state, and so there is a desire to do something about it. Grenada needs resources in order to develop. We cannot develop without resources. And because these governments that have run the country realize this problem, they have tried many different things. They've tried offshore banking, that has failed. They've tried informatics, that has failed. There was a first try at what we call the Citizenship by Investment Program, back in the late 1990s, early 2000s. That failed when 911 occurred. Now we have a very vibrant, dynamic, and successful CBI program, but that too has its vulnerabilities, because the bigger countries, especially Europe and North America, they continue to hold a hammer over our heads, in a manner of speaking, because they too are concerned, either because they are losing income when the rich people live their country and come to these parts, or because they are concerned about criminals and crimes coming at their doorsteps. So we have a situation in which we need to find ways to diversify our economy and to develop our economy in a very stable and sustainable way. And while all these different... And while all these different things have been tried, one of the most important things that could have been tried has not been tried. That is to say, our potential for oil and gas development. Grenada sits in a very, very unique and fortunate position. Grenada's neighbours are Trinidad and Tobago, Venezuela, Guyana, yes, countries with which Grenada shares a single continental shelf. And these countries that I mentioned earlier are all countries with proven hydrocarbon reserves. Many seismic studies, and when I say seismic here, I'm talking about the scans that are done in the sea, in the oceans, to see whether or not there's oil and gas potential, done by seismic ships that do scans. Many seismic studies have been done in Grenada's waters. And each of these scans would tend to suggest that Grenada may have, and I say may, may have potentially commercially significant hydrocarbon deposits. And while all these things have been going on, we have not managed to do very much about it. Grenada, as it presently stands, must have something, I believe that. And the reason we say that is that several companies, whether we're talking about Shell, Petro-Canada, the Canadian oil company, Exxon, Repsol, the Spanish oil company, Petrobras, the Brazilian oil company, and all of these companies have all expressed an interest in coming into Grenada and doing some work. We are satisfied that these companies will not come into Grenada, will not express an interest in Grenada unless they felt themselves that there was something here. And we continue to see that happening, that they continue to express an interest in our country. Now, ladies and gentlemen, I must say that, you know, while these opportunities exist for us, there have been challenges. Two in particular that I want to mention. In 1996, the then-government of Grenada entered into a contract with an oil speculator from Texas, a company known as RSM Corporation, led by an oil speculator, Jack Grinberg, a man who was basically buying maritime space, buying, getting licenses, and then trying to sell it all to other people, speculating basically, came in and was able to purchase all of Grenada's maritime acreage, over 26,000 square kilometers of water, was able to get a license to explore all of Grenada's maritime acreage for 19,000 US dollars a year. That is about 1,500, just a little more than 1,500 US dollars a month. If you think about it, the students at St. George's University who are renting one-bedroom apartments are paying about 1,500 dollars a month. So what a student is paying here for one year to rent an apartment is what Grenada was getting in return for its entire maritime acreage. And when the government realized that they had made a very serious blunder, they walked away from the contract. The gentleman, of course, took them to court because he's one of those people who love the courthouse, always have 20, 30 lawsuits going on at the same time. So he sued the government, or at least took them to arbitration in the United States, and of course, the government of Grenada had to pay US lawyers to represent them, spending literally millions of dollars to defend the case. While that case was going on, the government entered into a second contract. Before that case could be finished, the government entered into a second contract in which a Russian company came and said, listen, we are prepared to take over this license, but what we want you to do is agree that you will give us 11 blocks and we in turn will pay for the lawsuit. We will pay 2.5 million US dollars for the lawsuit. They paid 1.9 million dollars, as far as we know. The lawsuit was finally, when the government changed in 2008, the lawsuit was finally won by us, and the gentleman walked away. That company, the Russian company, the Global Petroleum Group, as we know them, that company entered into the contract, and not very much happened, frankly, between 2008 and 2013 as far as that relationship was concerned because the government took the position that until and unless there was evidence that the 2.5 million dollars had been paid in full, they were not going to do business with the Russian company. In the meantime, the National Democratic Congress Government did three very important things that I think we should mention. First, it entered into negotiations with Trinidad and delimited our boundaries, meaning the maritime boundary between Trinidad and Grenada was finally agreed on and determined and entered into a treaty once and for all, that had never been done before. The second thing that happened was that the government entered into an agreement with Trinidad and Tobago, a cooperation agreement, that said, we will cooperate, the two governments, the two countries will cooperate to explore and exploit and develop our marine resources together. We will work to develop our non-living marine resources, which included, of course, oil and gas. And the third thing that we did was, we sought to enter into what is called a joint production, Joint Development Zone Agreement, that's what it's called. A Joint Development Zone Agreement, where the two countries agreed that if there was any oil or gas straddling the border between the two countries, the two countries will set up a team together to work and explore and exploit and develop that. What that would have done for Grenada was that it would ensure that Grenadian workers become trained in oil and gas production and development. We would learn. And then, once we learn, working with Trinidad on the boundaries, then we can move into our own space and do what we needed to do on our own. Trinidad, of course, most of you would know, is one of the oldest oil-producing countries in the world. Over 120 years since Trinidad has been producing oil and gas, and older than Mexico, older than Iran, and some of the other countries. And so there was a lot to learn from working with Trinidad in that capacity. We must say that while this potential exists for Grenada, it is not without its challenges and its difficulties. There are genuine concerns that if Grenada were to get into oil and gas at this point, then it can affect our maritime system or, you might say, our pristine marine ecosystem. We are concerned about the environment. There are concerns about tourism and how it's going to affect tourism. There are concerns about fishing and how it's going to affect fishing. There are concerns that if Grenada were to get oil and gas, some people may get rich and other people may still suffer because you don't have an equal or even distribution of the wealth that comes from the oil and gas. There are concerns also that we may suffer from what is called the Dutch disease, so much money that you don't know what to do, you turn almost stupid in trying to handle and manage the money. So there are concerns about how we will manage oil and gas if it came to that. But despite these challenges, we believe it is still important to explore and exploit. We live in an age that we consider to be the age of green development. Climate change is important. Protection of the environment is important. To develop in a sustainable and responsible way is important. We support climate change. We support green development. We support the development of a low-carbon economy. The question that we must confront is, how are we going to finance that development? Green development must be financed. The money must come from somewhere. You can't just say, I'm going to bring, I'm going to set up a solar farm, or I'm going to only use electric vehicles from now on. Somebody has to pay for it. And the challenge of finding money to pay for green development is a very serious challenge. If we were able to find oil and gas, then of course, we would be able to use some of the monies that we obtain from the oil and gas development to be able to finance our economy in a low-carbon and sustainable way. And so it's not one or the other. The challenge for the country must be to find the balance, a balance that is sustainable. And when we speak about sustainable development, what we're thinking about and talking about essentially is to use the resources of the country in such a way that succeeding generations who come after us can also enjoy those resources. We must not use them in a way that when we finish with them, we destroy it and the following generations cannot get any from it. We must use it in a sustainable way. And if we are to do that, it does not mean we should ignore oil and gas. It is against this background that the Prime Minister, in his wisdom, decided it is important for us to look into Grenada's potential, see whether or not we have it, and if we have it, let's do something about it. And in his wisdom, in his wisdom, the Prime Minister established the Grenada's Hydrocarbon Technical Working Group. Just to give you a quick summation of what this group was charged with, we will do it in the simplest possible terms, but just to say that, over purpose, you would note there, if I may just mention first, promote an environmentally friendly and socially responsible hydrocarbon development in Grenada as a first priority, environmentally friendly and socially responsible. In other words, if we can't do it that way, we don't want to do it at all because it must be sustainable, it must be balanced. But the intent, at the end of the day, is to know the country's hydrocarbon potential. What benefits do we have? Estimate the monetary value and potential societal contributions of developing hydrocarbon resources. Attract credible major or mid-sized companies as investors to come in and explore with us, do exploration activities in Grenada. Prepare, update the legal instruments. Right now, we don't have good laws. Update the legal instruments, the Petroleum Act, the model production sharing agreements and concession agreements for enabling the industry. Prepare the local human capital and businesses to support the sector. We must train our people, improve the quality of the human stock so as to prepare them, set up the institutional framework. Do we need a ministry? Do we need a department? Do we need a unit? How will that happen? If we are going to discover oil and gas, what company, what profit-making company will the government have to set up to ensure that it too can share in the profits? Just like Canada has set up Petrocan or Brazil has set up Petrobras and so on. How do we ensure that we have that overall picture in place so that when we move forward, we can move forward in a stable, predictable way and a responsible way? The task ahead is not a big one. Our task essentially is to see whether we have it, and if we have it, to convert Grenada into an oil-producing nation. That's how big it is. When this started, there were those who were of the mistaken impression that this was a kind of investigative body to see who did what and arrest a few people and so on. Because I would meet people in town and they ask me, well, what's going on? Nobody got arrested yet? And you have to say to them, this is not about arresting people. This is about arresting the oil and gas in the ground and bringing it up so we can do something with it. Yeah? Sisters and brothers, it's a big task. We've thrown up on the screen an organogram just to give you a very quick sense of how developed and complex this can be. At the head of that matrix, organogram, you see the Technical Working Group. Below that, you have the Lead Technical Consultant. We must hire a number of experts to help us. Even though we are working as a team, a small team, we are not experts in oil and gas. We know very little about oil and gas. Our business is to get the people who know about oil and gas and get them to work for us to do what needs to be done. So we have a Lead Consultant. We have a Program Control Manager. That's the person who is going to monitor and evaluate as we go forward. We have deadlines. The Cabinet has given us deadlines. They said, look, in the first instance, get this done. Tell us what's going on in 12 months. And if you can't do it in 12 months, come back to us and we'll give you an extension. So, but somebody must monitor among us what our deadlines are, how we going, whether we're meeting our targets and deadlines and keep moving forward. We also have to get help in recruiting experts because I can't just say, well, that person is a hydrocarbon expert or petroleum engineer, I'm going to hire him. We have to get people who know who are the people who know. And in that way, they help us to select the right people. Legal people, good lawyers, good petroleum lawyers, we need. You see legal there. We need people to help us resolve the contracts that we have. We need people to help us develop the legal system and the laws that we have. We need ongoing legal support. We need people to help us to delimit our boundaries. Although we are finished with Trinidad, we've not done that with St. Vincent, we've not done it with Venezuela. And you can't, think about it, if you have a piece of land, you can't say you lease it all to somebody and you know where your boundaries are. So you must determine where are your boundaries. And although we've done that with Trinidad, we have not yet done it with St. Vincent or Venezuela, and we need to do that as part of this mandate. So boundary limitation is an important step in the work of the Technical Working Group. You see the technical heading there, and that is for the geological and geophysical works. These are the people who will do the seismic work, all of the scans that will be done. These are the people who, the data management, data protection and licensing. These are the people who would collect all that seismic data, ensure that it is interpreted, see what it means, see what potential it has, and talk to the oil companies who will say, I want to license this block or I want to rent out this block to explore it and pay a fee to get the block and begin to explore it. And if there's something there, develop it in partnership with the government. So that is very important. You need commercial people, people whose business it is, whose knowledge it is, whose expertise it is to work with the commercial partners. It is not going to be easy to negotiate with Shell or Exxon or any of these companies. They are big, they are powerful, they are multinationals. They will have things their way. And you need people who can negotiate with them to be able to represent and protect your interests. You can't send novices to negotiate with them. So people who understand the business, who are going to be able to identify commercial partners and work with those partners are going to be important. People who are going to manage the licensing round because if you have a block that you're going to lease out to somebody, you'll have bidding, right? Shell may say, I want it. Exxon may say, I want it. Repsol may say, I want it. Somebody else may say, I want it. And then, of course, you're going to choose your best partner. So there's a bidding, there's tendering, and the best partner you will work with and lease out that block to somebody in that process. You notice that we have the environmental, again, because we see the critical importance of environmental responsibility. So we must ensure that experts are hired who can undertake the environmental impact assessments, the social impact assessments, and to help to develop mitigation strategies to ensure that we do not shoot ourselves in the foot. And then, of course, you have the issue of capacity building, knowledge and workforce development. In all of this, you want to train your people. I was saying to a team of people that came here to see us the other day, she asked me the question, one of the members of the delegation asked the question, what if you train all these people and at the end of the day, you don't have anything? I said, we'll send them to Guyana to work. In other words, if you're trained and you have a skill, even if at the end of the day, we find nothing at all, you still have potential for Grenadians to go and work whether in Trinidad or Guyana or somewhere else and send some remittances home to help the country develop. So that's the situation that we face. Now, I want to say something quickly on the work of the Technical Working Group. The next slide will show you very quickly what, these are just some of the things that I want to mention. One is the recruitment of experts. So that, so far, we've recruited legal experts, we've recruited technical experts, we've recruited a Lead Consultant who is driving that entire process. And you would see that there is yet some recruitment work to be done in terms of the commercial side of things, in terms of the reservoir engineers, the petroleum engineers. But so far, we have put together, the Lead Consultant is a company, it's not a person. The Lead Consultant is a consulting company, and inside of that company, they have all kinds of expertise across the spectrum that can work and advise. So we're getting the widest and broadest range of advice in that regard. So recruitment of experts is well underway. Engagement of the seismic companies are well underway. Two companies in particular have done very extensive seismic work here in Grenada and have the data. By the way, I must let you know that any data that any seismic company gathers in Grenada's waters belong to Grenada. It is the patrimony of the state, and they can't say to us they're not giving us. Furthermore, when they start licensing it out to other people, we are entitled to get a share of those monies. And we are talking now to two companies, one that did seismic work in Grenada in 2003, and in fact, in 2012, had already decided that they wanted to enter into a revenue sharing agreement with Grenada. The drafts were exchanged. They told us they were holding 480,000 US dollars on account for us at the time, and then the government changed. Sadly, that company then went into bankruptcy, and so that money was lost. But we are now engaged with the successor company. But we are now engaged with the successor company, they wanted to take over that, and we are in full discussions with them as well as with another company that has done some studies here in 2019 and are very eager to enter into contracts with us. Those contracts themselves will bring some returns because once we sign the contracts, we enter into, part of the agreement is a revenue sharing. They will try to recover the money they spend during the seismic work, but after they collect their monies, whatever profits are made after that is shared between the company and the government of Grenada. And that in turn can help us to finance the work of the Technical Working Group. Our hope is that this government will not have to take monies, or too much monies at least, out of the consolidated fund in order to finance what we are doing. So part of our mandate is to try and help to raise money as best we can in different ways. Reactivation of the Global Petroleum Group, the GPG, is one of our mandates. As I said, not very much happened between 2013 and 2018 as far as the relationship was concerned, but the company did enter into new contracts with the then-government, the 2013-2018 government, new contracts where they got new licenses and production sharing agreements. They were, under the terms of that agreement, they were supposed to drill what you call an exploration well, and depending on what they found, do an appraisal well. The exploration well will basically tell you if there's any gas or oil find in the area, yes? The appraisal well will go in to actually find the exact location and give you a sense of quantities and quality, yes? That company has done an exploration well in 2018 but has not yet done an appraisal well. Indications are, from that, from the studies that came out of the exploration well, indications are that there were gas finds, yes? That there was at least gas finds. And if there is, then it is now for that company to proceed to do the appraisal well. That is, so negotiations are continuing with the government, that is progressing slowly, I should say. But what the government is expecting, of course, is that the company will progress with the drilling of the appraisal well and conducting whatever studies that they have to conduct in accordance with industry standards. In the meantime, the government is not going to sit and wait and just see what happens with that company. Grenada's territorial area is now divided up into 44 large blocks. Those blocks will be cut up later on and subdivided, but for the moment, Grenada's blocks are divided in, Grenada's acreage, maritime acreage, the sea, is cut up into 44 large blocks, and at present, the GPG, the Global Petroleum Group, is holding on to four of those blocks, yes, under the contract that was signed. So those four blocks, they are working on. Our position is, even though they are doing what they are doing, we cannot sit and wait. We have an additional 40 blocks that needs to be explored and developed and exploited. So we are actively laying the foundation for engaging the commercial partners that I spoke about that will ensure that we can make the best use of what we are doing. I want to mention also that we have reactivated our agreement with Trinidad and Tobago, that cooperation agreement that I spoke about earlier, very, very important. Trinidad is keen to do business with Grenada, always has. From the days of Prime, from a Prime Minister, Patrick Manning, may God rest his soul, there was always a keen interest to assist Grenada in the development of whatever hydrocarbon potential it has. That interest has continued with the present government, and discussions are actively underway with the Ministry of Energy and Energy Industries in Trinidad and Tobago. They will also be, they've agreed under that program to share information with us and to cooperate in as many ways as possible. We have also managed to engage the Commonwealth Secretariat, they were here last week, all week last week, for a scoping mission to see what, how they can help us in whatever ways they can help. And that week of meetings and engagement with all of the different ministries and departments was extremely fruitful, and we are looking forward to the report and the work program that they will put forward. In the meantime, the government has developed, the Technical Working Group, for the government, of course, has developed its own work program. What are we going to do now that we have laid that foundation and had a very keen, a very interesting workshop here between February 10th and 14th? We came together with all of the experts, and we met here for three and a half days to work out a plan of action for the next 18 months. Who is going to do what, when, how? Who is responsible? And the gentleman that we have as the Project Manager Controller is going to ensure that everybody does their job. Our hope is that 18 months from now, we will be able to give the government a very clear sense of what is possible and what it should be doing from there going forward. So the plan that we have developed in terms of the way forward, you would see here, one, data availability and quality assessment, gathering the data from the seismic companies and assessing the quality is going to be important, reviewing those documents as well as reviewing the contracts that we have with GPG and others. We need to look at the contracts so as to better understand Grenada's rights and Grenada's obligations. If you enter into a contract with someone, you have to know what is your responsibility, they have to know what is their responsibility, and you have to know what your rights are. There was a challenge, I think most of you would know that, that when this government came in, many of the documents that would assist the government in determining in a very clear way what were its rights and obligations was simply not available. Documents, the government's files could not be found, and we are still struggling with documentation. We have been able, with the help of people here at home and abroad, to pull together many of the critical documents, but there are also important documents that we have not had sight of, that we've heard about but not had sight of. So reviewing those documents, getting the remaining documents and reviewing them are going to be important as well as reviewing our laws. It is very important to undertake a very careful study of the existing laws and regulations in the industry. The technical and commercial work is going to be important, setting up what you see there, we call a data library. We must have a place where we store all of Grenada's data, just like if you have books, you have to store them in a certain place, that when you need them or any kind of documentation. The issue of storage of important information and documents is critical. How you store it determines how easy it is to retrieve it. And so storage and retrieval is a science in itself, and the management of data is a science in itself. And so we want to ensure that we do it and we get experts, we train experts to do that. Of course, we want to get the bidding rounds in place, understanding the process of bidding for the blocks. We want to understand the tools, develop and have available the tools, the bidding tools that will be used. And of course, that would mean as well engaging the partners, sometimes marketing, going on road shows to tell people what you have and show people what you have. All of these are steps that will have to be taken as part of the technical and commercial work. We mentioned quickly the human capital and institutional development. I said quite a bit already about the need for the regulator, proper regulator, and the need to train our people, and I've said quite a bit already about the need for us to be environmentally and socially responsible. Developing a plan to engage the communities, the government cannot do this by itself. All of the NGO, the potential communities, stakeholders that will be impacted by what you're doing must be engaged, must be consulted, their views must be taken into account. And of course, it is very important that once they present their views, then, of course, the government can use, take those views into account in determining what the appropriate strategies are going to be. There's a slide there on local content, and that is to say, looking to see how we can develop industries locally that will be able to benefit workers, businesses, that will be able to benefit if we got the oil and gas industry going, and how we're going to supply the industry with things locally rather than having to buy everything locally. If, for example, we were to set up an oil rig out there, then you don't want a situation where the food that is going to be used or consumed by the men working, or the men and women working on the rig, would be food that is catered in and brought from the United States. You would want to know that a local catering company will be the one that will provide the food on that ship. So there will be lots of industries, ancillary industries that can develop, lateral industries that can develop, and we would want to explore how that can be and how we can turn that into business and have lateral expansion, so to say, of the economy. We've said much about training and development of our young people. It is going to be very, very vital, not only as in over the next 18 months, to have people who can help us who are already trained, but to begin to prepare our people by sending young people on mentorship courses, short-term courses in Trinidad and other countries, by friends who are willing to help us and to ensure that we can begin to develop our workforce in the shorter term, and to encourage scholarships, secondment programs, training and development programs, and so on as we go forward. I want to say a word on the urgent priorities. What are the most important things that we are now faced with as we go forward? Getting the data from Trinidad and Tobago, getting the data from the seismic companies, entering into the revenue sharing agreements that I spoke about, work towards the bid rounds over the next 18 months, identify and recruit suitable people, Grenadians here in Grenada, Grenadians in the diaspora, as well as other people, non-Grenadians. We were thinking, for example, that a place like Trinidad and Tobago, their industry, the oil company, the National Gas Company, Heritage Company, ministry officials, all of whom have turned, let's say, 65 and no longer working, were in the industry, knows the industry very well, may just want to come to Grenada and take a stint for two years and help us. They're not looking for full-time, long-term employment, but they know that they can get home in half an hour, and they wouldn't mind coming and enjoy some of the food and beauty of our island, yeah? So there are opportunities there, and we need to explore them. Developing the tools we mentioned, and of course, these are some of the key things that we have on stock. We can answer some of the questions in relation to those as we go forward. I want to close with one final slide, and that is a slide that addresses what are the critical success factors? What are we going to have to do? What would we need to do if we are going to succeed? This list is not exhaustive, but I list here four things that I would like to close with. One is a united nationwide effort to find out once and for all if we have oil. It must not be the government's task, it must be our task collectively because of the impact it can have on our country, long-term impact on our country. It can transform the country. And so we must, together, take a pledge that we're going to do all that is necessary to ensure that we know exactly what we have and do something about it. The second commitment, the second success factor, is to put Grenada first in all that we do. If the members of the Technical Working Group are looking to get money under the table from oil companies, and the oil companies have them in their pocket, they would not be thinking of Grenada first, they will be thinking about themselves first. If ministers of government were to be induced into that situation, they'll be thinking about themselves first, not Grenada first. So it's very important that all of us think about this, and in everything that we do and in everything that we say about the oil and gas, don't be driven by personal ambitions, but be driven by long-term desire to see our country a better country. And I want to say that, I want to encourage everyone to commit to that as well. Thirdly, we must have open, transparent communications between the government and the people. Not just open and transparent, but honest. We must not come and tell you we find gas or we find oil the day before the elections because we want to win the elections. We must not give you false hope. We must not play games on an issue like this. If we find it, we find it. If we don't find it, we don't find it. And if we're doing this collectively, the government cannot be hiding documents and signing contracts behind your back and nobody knows what's happening. There must be an honest exchange and dialogue because that is the only way the government is going to be able to bring the people along with them to transform the country. Open, honest, transparent communication between the government and the people. And the fourth measure, I call it patience, tempered expectations. It is absolutely important that we all appreciate this is not something that can happen overnight. As much as we all want to see it happen, it takes time. We were asking the experts, between the day that you discover that there's something in the ground and the day that you pull it out of the ground, how much time are we talking about realistically? They said between four and six years. That is how much work it takes to bring it to the surface, yeah? So it takes time because after you do the, after you do the exploration well, where you say we find something, yes? That is usually done, you know, first they do the scans, they do what is called a two-dimensional scan or survey. If they see something there, then they do a three-dimensional scan, and they go down and drill to find the location. And then, after that, they drill, yes? After they drill and they say, yes, we see something that is commercially viable, then and only then you start talking about appraisal, knowing what is there and what quantities and quality and so on, and then a development plan to get it out of the ground. So it takes time. And so be patient with your government. Don't be too harsh, don't be too demanding. If six months from now you see nothing happen, don't say, well, boy, all you're getting oil and gas and we see nothing at all and so on. Work with us, let it happen collectively. A single mission by a single country, remember your slogan, one nation, one journey, one future. If we do it that way, we will be successful. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you Chairman Burak. I would like to invite you to stand by as we take some questions from the audience. If you have a question, I want to encourage you to step up to the mic. There are two mics in the hall, in the hallway. Yeah, making a hallway. Two mics in the aisle, thank you. If you have a question, we want to limit your questions to one question per person at this time because we're, we want to ensure that everybody gets an opportunity to ask a question. So if you have a question, please step up to the microphone in the aisle, and we will have the members of the Technical Working Group to respond to your questions as best as possible. Thank you so much Chairman Burak as we wait for the questions. I just want to remind you that there are booths at the back, the Ministry of Education has set up a, the scholarship desk is at the back, so during the break or after the session this evening, you could check them out for all your scholarship opportunities. We have someone stepping up to the microphone, question for Chairman.
Thank you very much. Before you speak, may I just mention, please, that we have some other members here of the Technical Working Group, and some of them may be more competent than I would be to answer some questions, so feel free, please, to answer any question or ask any question of the members, yeah? Thank you so much.
Hi, Grenadiers. Let me say first of all, right, I am very proud to be here. I am not a Grenadian, right? But let me tell you all something about life, right? The oil is a very important thing, but we have to think about the future. And when we look at oil, we have to think about what happened in Trinidad, what happened in Venezuela and Guyana. Grenada is one of the most safest places in the world. You understand? So we have to think about the future because if we don't think about the future, we are not going anywhere. Look at all of us in the audience here, all of us, all of us, they've got to say past 50 already, right? We don't have much young people here, look at it carefully. But it's true. We don't have much young people here. So we have to think about the future carefully and what we're going. Because in Guyana, there's a lot of crime. In Trinidad, there's a lot of crime. In Venezuela, there's a lot of crime, and they have a lot of oil in both them places. So when we think about the money, we are bringing the devil in our territory. I know you all ain't gonna like my saying, but it's the gospel truth. I didn't really come here to that, right? I really come to talk to the Prime Minister and my MP. So that is all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, citizen, for your contribution. We have another question from the lady in the back, you may proceed.
Good afternoon, everyone. Mr. Burak, I sit here this afternoon and I hear a lot really concerning this oil. And I really want to thank this government for enlightening us about oil. We come here and we... We come here and we listen and there's a lot of work to do. And it's good to be honest with your people. When you're honest with your people, you will get them to have confidence in you. Because I remember a few days before election, thank God you don't drag us as big people and children to come and tell us you find oil. So I'm so happy to know that we have a government that will be honest with his people. So thank you for being honest with us and letting us know. So if six months come and we find oil, as you relate, that you ask the people and they tell you it could take six years, so we don't have to be mad and beat up on you and say you lie to us. So we sit here and we listen to you and we will have patience with our government.
Excellent contribution, citizen. Chairman, I don't know if you wish to respond?
No, no, it's a compliment to the government officials. I trust the Prime Minister will respond at the appropriate time. I can't take the praise. Thank you.
Point number three on your last slide was open, honest, and transparent communication between the government and the people, so congratulations for your honesty again. We have another contribution, you may proceed.
Everybody?
Good evening.
I'm standing here tonight but I'm so disappointed because I have sixty years. And since before, since before I born, the world were using oil, since before I born. And I'm so disappointed because how come we don't know we stick us with the oil? We have one man bossing, they twenty-five years as a Prime Minister, how we do our oil? All we get is raw deal. You understand? Only raw deal we sign, raw deal we sign, right? I don't go to school, right? And if I had the privilege and the power and authority, we'd have known we have oil and if we do have oil long ago, right? Look at Trinidad, look at Guyana, once they have oil, we have oil, right? And when you drill and you're pulling oil, you're pulling oil from thousands of miles, they use a lot of oil already. You understand what I'm saying? So I'm really, I'm really hot and disappointed. Now, I can remember a few years ago, this army was saying that they have a plant, writing palm on a hill, they will set up a system and they have an elevator, build a hotel and set up a system with an elevator. And people from the hotel will go down on the beach into that, from the elevator. You know why you say that? Because they say Grenada could be like Abu Dhabi because of the oil, right? And this army bombs up and Grenada by accident, this army come and make money, he sell it from Camp Nicholson and he move on, right? Where the vision, where we can see, Trinidad had the oil about fifty years now, what do we do all these years? You understand? And to tell you the truth, I'm sick to my stomach, but you know if I have the oil, what I will do? I will set up a massive university, I will make doctors, I will make lawyers, right? I'm making them, I'm making them, right? Nurses, right? All kind of underwater wellers, what can I think about? And I'm selling it to the world. So the world want doctors, we selling for them. They want nurses, we selling for them. All kind of intelligence they have, engineers, in all different way and form, we selling for them, right? That I will do with the oil. So I'm saying once again, I'm disappointed and I'm hot, right? Because it's too take us too long, if we do this, we stupid, if we want to keep people poor for so long. So I'm saying all the best for Grenada. I don't know if you go find, I don't know what happens.
Very, very important observation by the gentleman because I think our hydrocarbon ambition, so to say, has been set back by about forty years because as early as the nineteen eighties, we had heard during the Grenada Revolution that in nineteen eighty, a team of persons, a ship, a seismic ship from the Russian Academy of Sciences came to Grenada and made some general conclusions that Grenada had hydrocarbon potential. Some work was done by the Commonwealth Secretariat that came to the same broad conclusions. In fact, some work was started over twenty years ago at the Commonwealth Secretariat and then the ladies were telling us the files are just sitting on the shelves in the Secretariat. And then, of course, we entered into the two bad deals, frankly, that I spoke about earlier. So for forty years, we have been floating with this idea, we have been floating with this possibility and done so little about it. In the meantime, the world has come and gone and moved on. Of course, green development has become the politically sensible and responsible thing to talk about and we find ourselves now trying to realize this possibility at a time when we are swimming against the currents because everybody is saying, well, you shouldn't really go for oil because this is a time to be environmentally responsible and so on. So we've missed, we've missed an opportunity. And mind you, it is still there because we can find a way to use those resources to finance the development, but I fully endorse the gentleman's observation that we've missed some very, very valuable years, we've wasted some very, very valuable years. And so that is why the Technical Working Group under the direction of the Prime Minister at this particular point in time is approaching this with a sense of great urgency. We must not wait. Thank you.
Thank you Chairman. We have a gentleman at the back, you may proceed with your contribution.
Thank you and good evening to everyone. At the risk of being repetitive, I must express my great appreciation for this forum and this avenue, given the transformative nature of that type of resource. It is actually important that we as a part of the citizenry have an opportunity to discuss and offer feedback to our government. I do not want to sound too critical of any institution's fire, but it's happy to be here now. I am Mr. Chair, I'm being a little bit coy, so I'm gonna break my question up in three parts, I'm a teacher, so we can't help it. One, have considerations being afforded to the development of a sovereign wealth fund. Two, I was quite surprised by Caucasian gentleman being a part of the spectatorship of the parliament some years ago, Global Petroleum Group. So have we been able to get all arguments and to limit all parameters with regards to the resources? And three, I am but a humble teacher, as mentioned in the past, so have we also considered as to how, if the results are positive, we can allow our public servants, our civil servants to benefit from such a resource because in many ways we want the economy. Thank you.
Yes.
All very important questions and considerations raised by the gentleman. On the first one, I would say that the answer to that question is yes, but of course, it is premature, yeah? In other words, one of the things that we will have to do as a matter of necessity is establish such a fund if resources were to be found because at the end of the day, as we said earlier on, it's not just about consuming, yes? It is about collecting those resources and using them in a way that is sustainably, that is sustainable, environmentally responsible, and socially responsible, thinking about the generations that come behind as well, yeah? And those who are present today, of course, yeah? So the idea is that you would get assistance to establish such a fund. In fact, we had an initial conversation with the Commonwealth Secretariat because they have people who specialize in the development of sovereign wealth funds, they just came from Guyana, they just set up the fund in Guyana. And of course, you know, countries like Norway and others who have done this over the years would be more than willing to help. One of the things I think we can boast about is the fact that this Prime Minister has managed to establish such exceptional and remarkable relations with so many countries and so many leaders across the world. So I'm very hopeful, I'm very hopeful that something that will be done. As far as the second issue is concerned, it's not one that I really can address, I suppose. I'm a white man in the parliament. Well, I will leave it to the politicians to comment on that one, you know? But on the third point, which I think is also quite important, you raised the point about a teacher, public servant, and how are we going to ensure that their needs and their welfare, their well-being is properly and appropriately taken into account. Part of that has to do, of course, with the management of the fund, yeah? But part of it has to do with ensuring that the resources are equitably handled. That's why we were talking a little bit earlier about ensuring that you don't suffer from what we call the Dutch disease because sometimes people get money and they do crazy things. If you watch some of the people who come into money very quickly and very easily, whether they are singers or athletes or whatever else, you know, you're young and you get a ten million dollars and you're spending and you're doing reckless things because, you know, the money came so easily, yeah? So we want to encourage responsible behavior and of course, the idea would be that you want to do it in a way that everyone can benefit from what you're doing. As to how that will be distributed, teachers, public servants and so on, I'm sure that the members of government will perhaps speak to that a little more later on, yeah? But those are the concerns, all important questions that you're raising, yeah? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, good night, a pleasant good night to everyone. You know that sometime you have a kitchen but you have no chef and it's all going to remain a kitchen until you get a chef. So we have a chef in NDC. Because first time in my years growing up have I ever seen such dialogue and exchange between the politician and the people. So to me, it's like experiencing history, being a part of it. So first of all, I want to say thank you to NDC for actually taking us out of the pit. And we are willing to help and give our assistance to make sure you do what you say you're going to do with us right by your side. So we look forward in having a good relationship and taking Grenada to the next level, up on our way in the experience in every way, in the youths, in our oil, in our gas, and in the development, not just of the country, but the people.
Thank you.
Because without the development of the country, you can develop the people, without the development of the people, you can develop the country and it wouldn't go anywhere. So thank you, NDC, we are proud.
Thank you for your contribution. Anyone who wants to comment? We have someone at the back, you may proceed with your contribution and it will take the gentleman.
Good night to everybody. I'm very happy to be here tonight because the fact remains that I would have heard before that we have wells and Mr. Nazim Burak is too ugly to spend the money. That was said by one of our leaders, I won't call him name, name with health, but you would understand from the backdrop because at this point we are standing there, I thought possible, I would have been able to walk on some money from the oil resources. We were misled. We had to deal with chicken farm, we had to deal with streams. And up to this time, we hadn't seen stream, claw, we hadn't seen feather. We were told that we would get foreign assistance to retrieve the monies because the monies were raised fifty-two point seven million dollars and we are still in the same position where we at at this present time. I'm saying that, Mr. Nazim, I applaud you for your honesty, I applaud you for your sincerity, I applaud you for the kind of conversation. As a matter of fact, the gentleman who spoke about you being too ugly to handle that kind of resources from the oil, I think that politicians should be held responsible, should be held responsible for that kind of situation. You tell us we have oil, you said to us, as a matter of fact, I remember vividly that Beast left his wife lunch when he ran to hear the announcement that we have another well while we are still speaking. That kind of deception is not good. I mean, I know biblically Jacob and Esau had an encounter and it was not a nice story because Esau revolted at one point. Sometimes mothers are concerned about their children and they dupe us or they dupe the situation. This administration, Mr. Deacon Mitchell, I told you before, and I'm saying it to you again, I believe that God sent you at the right time for Grenada to make a next step forward. How can you have good conscience knowingly? How can you as a leader knowingly? As a matter of fact, he said one time, don't blame him, blame yourself, the indictment is upon you because the more I do wrong things, the more you vote for me. Where is your conscience? And you notice I'm not calling names, eh? Where is your conscience? How can you continue to lead people down that slippery road? I remember sometime ago, the gentleman said that this gas and oil business, you don't profit, yeah? Thank God I had some sauce up lived there so I didn't faint. He say he don't spending one dollar in the gas and oil. Mr. Nazim.
Thank you.
Mr. Prime Minister, I'm very, very, very much heartened tonight to be standing here tonight to know that we are moving in a direction, a direction that is making sense because look at the people of Guyana, they waited for a long time. Today, as you say, temper the patience. Mr. Prime Minister, I want you to walk the straight and narrow way. Anytime you deviate, I'll be standing to say the same thing I'm saying here tonight. Have a good night.
Thank you for your contributions. All right, we'll take two more and then we move into presentations by our ministers. Gentlemen at the front, you may proceed.
Good evening. First, I'd like to salute the committee on an excellent report, very lucid, very well cut out. And it has a number of milestones that if we execute, will do well for Grenada. Second, I'm one of those technical professionals that Mr. Burak was talking about. I have over thirty years' experience in the oil and gas business on the exploration and production side with one of the largest oil companies in the world. And there need to be more people like me that look like me here in Grenada, putting Grenada first. And so I applaud you on that. You made a very good point that the country, Grenada, owns the documents and the data that is gathered out in Grenada's waters. And a kind of detailed question, but how transparent of a window does the country have? have into GPG's plans, what they've done, and what they know? Because the government has a total right to know what they know and to approve what they plan to do whenever and how they plan to do it. Thank you again to the committee.
Thank you. Do you have a question, Chairman?
The issue with the Global Petroleum Group is a difficult one, as I mentioned earlier. I mean, they, if you have a contract with someone, then you want to carry all the terms of the contract, but you need to know exactly what the contract says, you know, so you know what your rights are, what your duties are. And what we, part of the delay that we have suffered, I think, or experienced, is because the information was not readily available, yeah? But we have made progress, and we are actively engaged. Things are not moving as quickly as we would like, but it is moving. And as I said earlier, Grenada is not going to wait. The Prime Minister is not prepared to wait. As you see, we marching, we marching, you know? So we'll see how it goes, yeah? Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman, and our final contribution in this segment, you may proceed.
My good friend Danley.
Good evening, everyone. It's ironic, Mr. Burke just spoke about running all over the place for documentation, and that is precisely the point why I'm standing here tonight. I want to thank the government for taking that initiative, informing that group to lay the basis to explore what we have and what we can do with it. I think that is a step in the right direction. If that was done from the start, we would not have been where we are today. I think an enormous amount of time was taken by this committee searching all over the place for documentations that's supposed to be in the possession of the government. My question is, what is the government or the committee that is in place now doing to preserve all of that information and documentation that they have in their possession? So that, and I'm not predicting anything, because I believe this government is continuing. But, but I'm saying, for whatever reason that this government changed, any government coming into office should have those documents and all of those things readily available, because this is the, this is for the people. What is the government or the committee is doing to preserve that? That's my question. Thank you.
Yes, this is an absolutely important question, absolutely important. And I must say that there are two members of our team in particular who are, you know, every meeting, they raise this issue because of the importance that they attribute to it. Now, you're right, Danley, because this problem ought not to have occurred and would not have occurred had we had a system in place to manage this information. We must start with the realization and acceptance that this is government's property. This information belongs to the state, the proprietary information of the state, and so an individual cannot take it and do what they want with it. And frankly, this information should not only be stored and kept on a particular person's individual email accounts or in their homes, in folders and files, yeah? So the solution to the problem is to create a system within the government system that will ensure that this information is kept on the government's database and used by the government's database. So one of the first things that the Prime Minister ordered be done is that the government, of course, uses Microsoft three-six-five, sweet, yeah? And one of the first things that was directed is that email accounts should be set up for each of us, government email accounts, where that information is sent, and that information is stored, and that information is kept. So that if tomorrow I'm not on the team, all the information is there available, all of it. And that's, that's critical, because you want continuity, you want people to be able to follow. You don't want to have to start over twenty years from now. And of course, how it is stored, I said, is very important. Even, you know, three-six-five itself may not be sufficient, I'm not a technical person, but you realize that you have to have multiple, multiple sources of storage and backup systems. Even though some people are storing in the clouds, the cloud itself may have its own limitations, especially if a powerful government could say, look, we're imposing sanctions against you, and you're not able to access the information that you own. So your own information, you can become a victim by you being deprived the use and access to your own information. And in this very volatile world in which we are living today, these are all important considerations that have to be taken into account as you plan the storage, management, and retrieval of your data. So I want to suggest that Danley's question is an extremely important one, and of course, we in the Technical Working Group are very, very mindful about ensuring that we don't make that mistake again. Thank you so much. That's it for me, ma'am?
Thank you, Chairman. Let's give the Chairman of the Technical Working Group another round of applause for spearheading the team. And again, just we just remind you of the team, Nazim Burke is the chairman, we have Rodney George, Deputy Chairman, Mr. Richard Duncan, Ms. Siobhan Spencer Joseph, and Dr. Raymond Nurse. Let's give them a round of applause. I want to leave you with a quote from Nazim Burke, Nazim Burke, twenty-twenty-five, "See whether we have it, and if we have it, let's do something about it." Thank you so much. I want to, at this time, welcome and invite our Minister for Health, the Honorable Philip
Good evening, everybody. When the star is, to the mundo. All right, just checking to see if you, if you there. It's a pleasure to be able to join with the team to speak to us this evening on matters of health. I recognize our esteemed Prime Minister, the Honorable Deacon Mitchell. We skipping over Mr. MIT, we in his, we in his territory, eh? But afraid I get stole. So the man himself, honorable Andy Williams, MIT hotspot, the action man, that's the man. And our Minister for Tourism, Mr. Adrian, Honorable Senator Adrian Thomas, and all of my esteemed colleagues on stage, you know all of them by name. I just want to recognize these three gentlemen, all right? And all of you wonderful audience, I know I have a very limited time, so I don't want to utilize my time bluffing, I have to get into the meat of the matter. So I want to just thank each and every one of you for your wonderful turnout. You look colorful and beautiful from up here. Wonderful. All right, so ladies and gentlemen, the Honorable Prime Minister assigned me in January twenty-twenty-four, the Ministry of Health. And when I got in there, I actually thought that I was going to be able to get some quick wins, but that was not to be, that was not to be. But what I can say is that I am of the firm conviction that in twenty-twenty-four, we were able to lay a solid foundation for the transformation of healthcare in Grenada. We utilized the time to study the Ministry of Health, study all the plans, the researches, the documents that was laid up before us, including the legislation and the policy frameworks. So we are able to digest those things and engage ourselves in preparation, get ourselves into preparation mode, which included a lot of training, and more of that training will happen this year and in the years to come, because we believe that healthcare is built with the willing hands and the thinking minds of people. So that is what we have to do. We believe in the vision, I believe in the vision, that our healthcare system can be the best, the very best, in this region, and Grenada can actually become the healthcare capital of the eastern Caribbean, and that is what we working towards. But I want us, I want to remind us that this NDC government inherited a badly broken healthcare system. I don't want us to ever forget that, because those who make the noises always behave as if we inherited a pretty baby with no work to do. When we inherited the Ministry of Health, there were acute shortages of human resources, acute shortages. The government then had an attrition policy in place, in which for every ten person that left the Ministry of Health or left the public healthcare system, they only hired three. Only three people were allowed to be hired. As a result of that, that attrition policy resulted in a very acute shortage of healthcare professionals on the island. Many people packed up and left the system also, because they could not work under the strain that they were made to work under. Let us remember that there was a cry, a very loud cry, because there were acute shortages in medical supplies and medicine. We inherited that. We inherited a very demoralized workforce. The people in the healthcare sector were grossly underpaid. That is why the government of Grenada, our government, this NDC government, increased the monthly salary for the nurses by five hundred dollars and the doctors by a thousand dollars as an immediate emergency response. That is what we met, and that is our response. And now, we have moved to regularize thousands of workers throughout the system, and this year, we will see the greatest number of regularized healthcare workers in Grenada. But I want us to also remember that despite all of these problems and all of the strains that these people were made to work under, they couldn't speak. With this Prime Minister, they're speaking now, everybody's speaking. They have found their voice. Thank you, Minister for Education. Towards Vision Seventy-Five, Grenada Resilient and Rising, we have embraced a number of great initiatives that is geared to transforming healthcare in Grenada, and I will share some of these with you. First and foremost is the Hospital Quality Improvement Initiative. That quality improvement initiative is done in collaboration with the consultants from Mount Sinai International. Mount Sinai International is one of the largest teaching hospital in the United States. They are lending us the expertise, we have embraced the expertise, they have already done the gap analysis, they have submitted a report, we have studied the report, and we will implement the changes that are necessary to improve the quality of healthcare in Grenada. So we will start by hiring a quality improvement manager that will ensure that every one of these changes, important changes, are embraced and implemented. So we are going to do that this year. You will see that job advertising very soon, so look for it. That strategic partnership and the quality improvement exercise is not just a sexy phrase. It embodies the development of standard operating procedures for the Ministry of Health and for the hospital. It embodies the widespread and system-wide development of healthcare in Grenada, including service delivery adjustments, meaning the way we deliver service, the way we deliver healthcare, we are going to make some adjustments that are necessary to improve the quality of care that we deliver. It will also involve system-wide training and human resource development throughout the system. It will also involve information and communication technology enablement and development throughout the system. In other words, we will be embracing the technology and seeing technology as a partner to deliverance or towards the delivery of healthcare. So healthcare will become technology-driven. We are going to embrace the technology, and with that, we will implement a steering committee that will look at all the various systems that we have, because ultimately, we want to be able to speak across the systems and connect hospital with pharmacy, pharmacy with procurement, procurement with the doctors, doctors with the nurses across the system, so that we can speak one language across the system. For example, somebody in St. Patrick gets sick, they happen to be in St. George's, when you log into the system, you have to be able to be in a position to pull up the full medical history of that individual. Added to that, we are looking towards being able to have a system in which we, the patients or citizens of Grenada, can log in at any time to view our medical history. That is where we need to go. Project Polaris, the construction of a state-of-the-art, multimillion-dollar, teaching hospital and of a state-of-the-art multimillion-dollar teaching hospital and medical village. Marrying tourism with healthcare. Marrying sports with healthcare. Marrying retirement with healthcare. Seeing healthcare not just as a matter of delivering medicine to patients or examining patients, but seeing medicine as a business for our people. Which means apart from delivering care to our citizens, we are also going to be catering for people throughout the, the, the OCS and throughout the world who want to come to these parts where crime is negligible. And somebody talk about that when you're talking about gas with this government that you have. You see, crime, you know what breeds crime? Corruption. You didn't hear me? Crime is multiplied. Somebody say is fed with corruption. And when you have a government with integrity, you don't have a problem. So our medical village will cater for returning nationals, tourists or anybody who just want to enjoy the natural beauty of our cascading mountains or gentle beaches with waves washing across your body, enjoy three hundred and sixty-five days of sunshine and heal in an, in an environment where you do not have to worry about crime or somebody breaking into your, the back, in, in, in your back door. This is what we are offering. So we, we are, we are meshing health with our own way of life. And the, of course, the beauty and tranquility of our beautiful island. So that is what we're doing. So Project Polaris, the construction of the new hospital will marry all of this together. And I want to say something that this also speaks to retaining some of our professionals in the system. Because all right, so I have to skip over this. Let, let me try to cover some of the important points. And also health sector strengthening, so I'm skipping over the Project Polaris now. Health sector strengthening and transitioning, where we're going to have a laser sharp focus on primary healthcare development, ladies and gentlemen. All thirty-six centers throughout the island will be upgraded and brought up to a level where you can go to your medical stations, health centers and get top care. Last year, we delivered six dental units. So every health center now has a dental unit. So you can go there to get your teeth clean and ensure that you don't have to be extracting. We don't want people to be extracting. We want you to be taken care of your teeth on a regular basis. Also with that, I just want to touch quickly our school health program. Very important on teaching the young ones at a tender age to take care of the body, understand the body, understand the health, right? So we've been doing a lot of that, health education in the school as well as dental health in the school. So general health and dental health. And also we are telling them about different career opportunities involved in healthcare. And I tell you the truth, then I have discovered that there's health, studying medicine is a very vast area. It's not just becoming a doctor. Yes, you can become a doctor, but within becoming a doctor, there are multiple career opportunities available. So you don't necessarily have to be looking at patients. Lot of opportunities and our young people have to become aware of these opportunities so that those who don't really want to deal with blood and operating room and all of that, they must know that there are opportunities available within healthcare. So we want to do that in the system to stimulate and encourage our people to take up those careers. Statitization of the hospital, that is an absolute necessity. We have gotten the green light from Cabinet to, to go, to pursue that. We have already given the terms of reference and appointed the, uh, transition committee that is going to be, um, leading that process with a well, with a well-renowned, uh, transformational leader. National Health Insurance, we are pursuing national health insurance this year. And again, that is one of the platform principles on which we are going to transform healthcare. There's a lot on digitization of the system that I really would like to speak about. I just want to touch on one of it. Um, digitize, digitalization of health surveillance operations. Now, information is everything when it comes to health. And especially in this time where we have pandemics and all of these things and emerging, uh, diseases are spreading, we have to be very on top of data as it happens. And so, um, we now have weekly common couple disease reporting. So the system now can give you weekly common couple disease reporting, can also monitor aviruses on a continuous basis and all of these things. So we have, we are really, we are aligning ourselves with the technology to transform healthcare. So we have done a lot in that and we have a lot more to do this year. Um, I just want to touch on the availability of medicine. That's the last point, okay? Yeah. Last year, I want you to listen carefully because management of medical supplies and medicine is not a simple thing. We do not ha- we do not utilize, we do not utilize an inventory management system for medicine in Grenada. So that is where we are now transitioning into. Now, what we've done last year, we hired a central management stores manager as well as an additional officer to strengthen the process. We reduced the process in time for orders being placed for medicine with the doctors. So when the sending the medication, we reduce that significantly so that hospitals will not run out of medication. Those small but very strategic moves. We also developed standard operating procedures for treating with procurement of medications and medical supplies, ordering, purchasing, as the case may be, and also payment. So these structural changes is what will speak to us not running out of medication. We have also developed a national list of medicines, first time. So we now have a comprehensive list of medication that is used in the public sector. It's our, uh, responsibility now to continue to modify and increase that list. Um, and now we're now going to be moving towards uh, digitalizing central medical stores. And as I mentioned before, we are going to have a steering committee to look at information communication technology and that is going to help us significantly. I'm not going to talk about the, the centers that we did in Karakoo. We've done all the renovations there. Um, the one in Pitty Martinique, the only reason why we have not done it, and that was deliberate, is because we want to make it bigger and better than it is. We want to ensure that we can do at least two minor operations in Pitty Martinique when you, because you have to take boat to go to Karakoo. We're trying to give a kind of mini hospital sort of in Pitty Martinique. So you want to get it right. We want to get it right. And that's the reason why. But we have a temporary facility that is being used. I will stop here. It's quite a lot to say, but, um, I'll stop here. All right? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Minister for Health, the Honorable Philip Telleford. The next presenter is Senator the Honorable Adrian Thomas. He will speak on agriculture. Um, he is representing Minister for Agriculture, the Honorable Lennox, Lennox Andrews. So let's welcome Senator the Honorable Adrian Thomas. And a reminder to our presenters, you only have seven minutes to present or I will ring the bell or, or pass you a little note.
I want to promise that I will not use seven minutes. I don't like when the press secretary has to say anything to me. But I want to, I've prepared something to, which will cover about four minutes. So I want to use that two minutes to sing a song. Would you want to join me? Stand. Stand up. I'm going to sing the first, it's a chorus, right? So I'm going to sing it and then you all will follow in the second chorus. Remember, it's just two minutes. You have to learn quick. Okay? Everywhere he went, he was doing good. He's the mighty leader leading Grenada. When the people saw him, they started coming. Everywhere he went, my dude, he was doing good. You all know the song? I just write the song, you all know it already? Let's sing it again. Clap your hands now. Everywhere he went, he was doing good. He's the mighty leader. He stands for when the people saw him, they started coming. Everywhere he went, my dude, he was doing good. All of you know this song well, but I'll go load it again. It's well recorded, okay? So our four minutes. Before I start my presentation, let me address the head table, Prime Minister, the Honorable Dick Mitchell, Cabinet, my Cabinet colleagues, parliamentary secretaries, Mr. Nazinbok and his team, Sister Carver, let's Cabinet Secretary and the other permanent secretaries who are here with us today, ambassadors, invited guests, brothers and sisters, comrades all. I really wanted to give yourself a round of applause again for turning out here such a large numbers. I am asked to present on behalf of Minister Lennox Andrews, Honorable. He's out of state. Actually, I was sitting there hoping that he would walk through the door because the flight, but the flight is a little late. However, he made his presentation available to me. So please be with me because it's one year ago I left Ministry of Agriculture and my focus is on tourism. So I don't worry with the press secretary. When I finish the presentation, I must say a little about tourism. She didn't hear that. Please don't mention it to her. As you are aware, the government is very serious about the development of, about the agricultural sector. We believe that any nation that watered salt must make every effort to feed its people. Clap. When we can do that, we will not succumb to COVID. We will not succumb to extreme weather or climate change, wars in the, in the Ukraine or in Israel and Palestine. And even those countries in the world today who still believe it is okay to bully big ocean states like Grenada and the Caribbean. Clap too. Hurricane Ivan and COVID taught us a great lesson, especially when it comes to feeding our people. Thanks to St. Vincent and the Grenadines after Ivan, many of you all too young now. Now, some, some people know about Ivan, when I was there. Grenada has proven itself in the past. We did well in agriculture. And the archives in England and Europe will tell you that we produce a significant amount of agricultural products. We process a significant amount of agricultural products and we exported it to Europe. And we build these countries. We believe and I believe that we can do it in Grenada, Karakoo and Pitty Martinique. The year twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, I, I believe the Ministry of Agriculture lay a very good foundation in terms of developing the agricultural sector. In regards to the World, the World Bank project with the food security, I believe that we did a very good job. And twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six and going forward, agriculture will rise again in Grenada, Karakoo and Pitty Martinique. So I will ask the media personnel to put up the, put up the slides and I will just picture them for the next two minutes. I already utilized two. The government initiative to develop the agricultural sector will be focused on four main areas for twenty twenty-five. Tissue culture, irrigation, farm machinery and animal production. These are strategic moves to enhance food security, very important, increase productivity and modernize farming practices. I was looking for some nice pictures to show you all, but like technology beating us back this evening. On the issue of tissue culture, this technology will boost crop production by enabling the mass product propagation of disease-free and high-yielding plant varieties, particularly in the horticulture and staple crops. The government is working in collaboration with the Chinese agricultural mission and they have established, already established the laboratory in Meribou and it will be called the Meribou Tissue Laboratory where good planting material will be produced. It cost the government over seven hundred thousand dollars. And we, money, monies that have been spent there, we want to make sure that we get value for money. So we are looking forward to producing, to mass producing plants and distribute it to our farmers. The area of irrigation, we know definitely that this is a serious problem, especially in the dry season and periods like now. Many of you all, if you make a sign of the cross for the little shores you have been getting recently, last couple of days. All right, you all, I, I know, I, I, I know there are some Catholics and Pentecostals in here, but that, but that's okay. So Grenada is definitely land of rivers. We have water, but sometimes we have difficulties in getting the water to the farmers. So irrigation will be a serious project and it's part of the World Bank project. We'll be expanding the infrastructure to help mitigate the reliance and rain-fed agriculture. We cannot afford continuing doing farming seasonally. We have to do farming year round. We eat every day. And so we have brought in some agricultural material already and over seventy farmers have already been receiving material. And we are hoping in twenty twenty-five, farmers start receiving as much as possible so that they will be able to establish on their farm irrigation system that will make the production of fruits and vegetables and all other foods available to the Grenadian people. Another area we want to pay particular attention to is the farm machinery. This is a department that was very beneficial to the farmers throughout Grenada, Karakoo and Pitty Martinique. In terms of land preparation, the farmers may not quarter an acre of land, one acre of land, you cannot afford to buy a tractor. So the government have to invest heavily in those equipment so that farmers can loan them. They can list them for a short while and we can offer them the service so that the land preparation that they need will be available for them. So I'm very happy on behalf of the Minister for Agriculture to say that this department will be back. It will be reinstated. It will be up and running and farmers will have the opportunity for the service. And the last and most important part today, I know that Grenadians are very addicted to meat. Right around. No, 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 few of your, four, few of us here eating without, without, few of us eating without meat. Everybody want to log a meat in the plate. Is that chicken leg, a piece of pork or something? So what we have decided to do is to improve and increase animal production in Grenada, Karakoo and Pitty Martinique. and increase animal production in Grenada, Kariko and PT Martinique. Grenada, Kariko and PT Martinique will not get left. And so we have embarked and bringing in 466 purebred animals into Grenada from the United States. Those animals have been brought in sometime last year. We have 160 sheep, 144 pigs and 159 goats. Now these animals are hybrid animals. We're going to utilize them to cross-breed with our local animals. And so we'll improve our stock. So rather than rearing a pig for six months to get 120 pounds, we'll be able to raise these animals for five and a half, six months and get 230 pounds, 240 pounds, thereby increasing production. Yeah, I didn't have to ask for clap for that because more pork in the place, right? Part of the national breeding program. Will they? No calypso. We want to produce superior animals and, and, and good meat for our people so that we would not, we will cut down the importation of meat, especially chicken into Grenada by as much as 50% in the next three, four years. And therefore, we are asking farmers who are interested to sign up in maybe the next, in the next year and a half. We have already trained some farmers how to utilize these animals. Um, they, they have the capacity, they have the shelter and we are working with them to make sure that they make maximum use of those projects that I've outlined there. So once again, I, I, I want to conclude by saying that these initiatives will promote agricultural sustainability and enhance farmers' livelihoods and contribute to the national economic growth Grenada, for Grenada, Kariko and PT Martinique. And it will be remiss of me for my lap, my 30 seconds, which I, which they owe me. It would be remiss of me if I didn't spend, this is 10 seconds to say that tourism is doing well. It contributes about 31% to the GDP. Visitors are, they continue to come, um, for different reasons. The flights are, the flights are coming in and we will be focusing on community tourism and product enhancement for the, for 2025. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
So he's, he, he sang for two minutes. And he spoke for four. And he threw in some tourism for 10 seconds. Thank you, Minister. He is the former Minister for Agriculture, I think he did an excellent job. I just want to remind you, the goats, the sheep and the pigs are not for eating. I know you all saw some big, big pork and some curry goat on the screens, but they're not for eating just yet. Thank you again, Minister. At this time, we want to hear from the MP for the Great South and Minister for Implementation, Mobilization and Transformation, Honorable Andy Williams. Minister, I know you're home, but we, we're gonna give you 10 minutes. 10 minutes.
Who said 15 minutes? The people spoke. Good night to everyone. It's indeed a pleasure to be here tonight. Prime Minister, the Honorable Deacon Mitchell, Cabinet members, Cabinet members, P S's. Someone said that, that's the most P S A ever saw in a national town hall, so congratulations. Members of the tech, of the Oil and Gas Committee and Technical Working Group. And folks, let me just say tonight that this is what you call transparency. This is what you call transparency. And it shows you how this government goes about doing things, yeah? It's not about doing things under the counter. It's about coming to you, the people, and letting you, you know exactly what is happening. Because at the end of the day, we have a responsibility to report back to you. And this is what you saw, you saw here tonight. So I want to give the working group a round of applause, Mr. Nazimbok and his committee, excellent job. And while I'm here to speak on the government, I cannot be here tonight and not talk about my constituency. So, so permit me to talk about my, my constituency first.
Can I get some water?
Right. So I stand before you tonight, residents of the Great South and Grenada with great pride and gratitude as we reflect on the progress we have made together. Our community is changing for the better. And every step we take is aimed at improving your lives. Creating opportunities and, and providing resources you deserve. First of all, I want to point out a area in my constituency that is very important to me. And I'm talking about the Guancay community. Anyone from Guancay in the house? And let me just say that over the years, we have seen political games being played with Guancay. Right? Whenever election is close, you have the governments who will come, grade the road and put some, some binding on it and that's it. And every election is the same thing and the road continues to, you know, to get worse and worse. But what we have shown the people of Guancay is true representation. This is not an election year, election cycle, nothing. And what we have done for the people of Guancay, we have placed water lines six feet under so that water can be accessible to the people. We have placed solar lights in Guancay. After Berel, Guancay was the only place in the south that had lights. Also, we have given Guancay a quality road for the residents. What happened before is that when you have rain and so the people had to walk with two shoes, plastic bag and name it. And what we have done, we have said enough is enough and we did our best to ensure that we serve the people of Guancay in a quality manner. As we speak now, Nawasa is building the platform to put a tank for the people of Guancay and the surrounding areas so that they can get water and water is, is essential for everyone. Let's talk about the Tubu Road. Tubu Road has been a vital route for many years, especially for the students and the staff of S G U. After years of neglect, it has been resurfaced, making your travels smoother and safer. And we did that in just two and a half years. Let's talk about Kofi Boe Hill. The Kofi Boe Hill Road has now been fully completed. I remember just before elections last year, again, work was done on part of the road. But we are not waiting on the next election to complete the road. We have completed the road this year. And now the residents have a proper road that they can drive on and walk on every day. Let's talk about again some of the bypass routes that we are doing. I want to mention the UK Safe Project and I will mention it on every town hall meeting because you need to know this. And I've seen the other side being playing political games with it and I want to address it. That project was awarded to us in 2016. And after six years, you had 0% implementation. What we did when we came in, we launched the project, we got it back in 2023. And two years' time, in two years' time, we have done what we had to do to ensure that implementation will start in April of this year. Now, what is the UK Safe Project? One component is a southern water expansion project. And that is where all the water lines from the tunnel in St. George's to Point Stirling Airport will be changed. Will be changed because Nawasa have the challenge of increasing the pressure on the pipes because of the age of the pipes. So now that the water, so now that, that, that the lines will be changed, Nawasa cannot increase the pressure and more places can get water in a comfortable manner. So this project will, is geared to start in April. And what we have done, because we know the traffic will be interrupted, we have started work on the bypass roads in Gulf Coast and surrounding areas. Other roads that we are doing in the south is the, the, the Cliff Road. We have the Kentucky Road, which is not too far from here. We have roads in Calavie. We have a road in Monsayan in Granans Valley. And Rebecca, she was one that was, she spoke, um, a while ago. She was one that was clamoring for that road. And let me tell you, because sometimes you have areas that we tend to take for granted. If someone falls sick, if an ambulance have to come, if a fire truck have to come. Some people live on high hills and we just ignore it. So what we have done, we have brought the Bakure and the Bobcat and we have started to grade the road so that we can concrete it in a few weeks. Now I want to talk about the Woban Community Centre. That centre has been instrumental in the development of our youths for a long time. And you have activities on a regular basis at Woban. But if you look at the centre, dilapidated, like forgotten. What we have done, we have engaged youths in the area, in Montu Valley Lines. We have refurbished the centre and now we are painting the centre. The centre will be completed by the ending of this week. And on Sunday, we will open a competition to open the centre and to bring some sports back to the community once again. Housing, housing. For last year alone, we have provided over 100 houses for people and bathroom and toilet, right? But not just provide housing and bathroom and toilet, we are building entrepreneurs. We are building entrepreneurs. Every house we build, we employ a contractor, we give him a contract. We have an arrangement with the credit unions that they can go to the credit, the, the credit unions and get funding to build, right? In addition to that, what we did, we separated the process. So the person who's building is not the person who's painting, is not the person who's doing the plumbing and the electrical. So on one house, you have four contractors getting employment on one house. As a matter of fact, we are struggling to get contractors. So when you hear people saying that about youth unemployment and all these things, that's a joke, right? We are struggling to get contractors and workers right now. So if you are contractor, if you are worker, contact the MIT office, contact my office or contact any parliamentary office and I'll bet you that you will get work. Right? In addition, solar lights. Right? Last year, we have done some work on the Granans Beach and on the Granans, um, area. And that's where we try to light up the beach as a form of safety. The R G P F came to us and said, and said, Minister, we are getting an, an increase in the number of crimes on the beach. And I, and I could tell you, after putting these lights, the numbers have dropped tremendously. In addition, if you go tonight after this meeting, just go across by the Vendors Market about after 10, and you will see people bathing on the beach in the night. You know, so that just shows you the level of comfort that, that we have now. Um, lighting of playing field just next to here, the Monus, the Monus, Monus and playing field. For years, we have seen that playing field as one that if it was lit, you could have night activities, football, cricket and so. And as we speak here tonight, I can tell you, they have games across there tonight, something that we never had before. Let's go again because I have 10 minutes, so I, I want to run through it. Granan Basketball Court has sponsored four competitions thus far last year. We have refurbished the Granans Court and now our youths can be involved in, in something meaningful that can bring benefit to their lives. So Granans Court now is refurbished and every year we plan to give it a little facelift to keep it maintained going forward. Now again, we have the license centre in Dusty Ari. If you looked at that building some months ago, it was, it was like a dump. It was stuff from way back when. I think it, it got damaged from Ivan, nothing was done, right? And you will see it on the picture. Now we are refurbishing that building. We have changed the roof already. We have got rid of all the garbage inside. And we are in the process of doing the windows, tiling the floors and making it a medical centre for the South constituency. So Minister of Health, we are working together and thank you for your support. So folks, let me just say that we are doing, um, our best in the south and what you have seen in the south, it has been replicated in other constituency. And but before I leave, let me just talk about MIT, my ministry, mobilization, implementation and transformation. If you look at this year budget, you will see that MIT got an allocation of $47 million. When we came into office, the fourth budget, we got an allocation of $1 million, right? $1 million. And just two, two motorcycle after, we now have $47 million. So, so it shows growth in our ministry. Prime Minister and Cabinet, thank you. But most importantly, MIT, we are, we have, we have the responsibility to implement six major World Bank projects. And I'll go through them quickly. We have the Yubek Project that is unleashing the blue economy. And that project is aimed to strengthen and the, the enabling environment for the blue economy, economic recovery and resilience of selected coastal areas. We also have the regional, the O C S Regional Health Project. That project is aimed at increasing the capacity of our primary healthcare. So that when we have to like COVID, these medical stations and centres can be able to cope and to fight in terms of the, the, the increased demand on them. And this project, the key initiatives is to improve our health facilities, including our general hospital. We talk about the new one all the time, but also we have plans to better the conditions of the, of the existing one. I just want to mention two extremely important activities that were completed under this project in 2024. Firstly, the drawings for the smart health facilities in St. David's and St. Patrick's and the general hospital intensive care unit have been completed. Upgrades, upgrades are expected to commence in June of this year. New beds and mattresses for the Monge psychiatric hospital have been procured and will also be, be distributed this year. I think these achievements are moving greater healthcare sector forward into a part of resilience. Especially as we can see, the Monge Hospital has been included. We have a protocol decision for, sorry, data for the decision-making. That project is designed to enhance systems of government within the O C S that involves the, that involve sta, um, statistics. The data for the, the, the data for decision-making project will provide $40,000 US dollars to a minimum of eight students for tuition support in area of, in areas of economics, statistics, data science totaling 320,000 US dollars. Additionally, equipment to support the C S O Central Statistics Office was, was procured. And the National Strategy for, for, of, sorry, for development of statistics has been completed. We also have the GRIP project. And a GRIP project means Grenada Resilience Improvement Project. That project is financed by the World Bank in the amount of 15 million US dollars. And it has three major components. The Balthazar Bridge construction. Every time we have rainfall, heavy rainfall, that bridge floods. Subies and marking coastal protection development of, of a road asset management. To date, the GRIP has onboarded the design and supervision consultants for Balthazar Bridge. And subies and marking part of it also. It is anticipated that construction will commence in October of twenty twenty five. We also have the CARIP project. The Caribbean Digital Transformation Project. Which seeks to enhance digital technology, skills and services for governments, businesses and individuals. In Grenada, the project focuses on two key components. The creation of a digital enabling environment, which includes the establishment of the cybersecurity incident response team and the upcoming construction of the cybersecurity agency and network operation centre. The activity is currently in the beta evaluation stage. The second component centres on digital skills development and technology adoption. With CARIP prioritising digital skills training for individuals. To date, one hundred and eighty eight individuals are undergoing basic digital skills training. And over two hundred and forty have completed intermediate courses in areas such as software and web development, digital marketing, cybersecurity and other related fields. Additionally, the programme has provided technology adoption training to forty three businesses and awarded grants to twenty one small enterprises. Six, we have the OES Regional Tourism Project. This project is vibrant in the sector. And it facilitates economic growth in a sustainable and exclusive, an exclusive manner. As well as, as well as positively impacting unemployment. And we are talking about the Fort George project. For years, the police headquarters have been placed on Fort George. But this is one of the most beautiful tourism sites we have on the island and we have been on the utilising it. So folks, let me just say again that this project has been on the books since August of twenty seventeen. August of twenty seventeen. And it took this administration to get this project going. The date for completion is September of twenty twenty five. Although we are trying to finish before that. And when this is finished, this will be one of the most attractive tourism sites that we will have on the island. And if you want to look back a bit, we do not mind because we saw the beautiful building we have on the island that is now the police headquarters. So let me just say that, folks, tonight, that your government is doing its best to meet the needs of every citizen. But we must be honest, five years cannot undo the damages caused by, by over twenty years of neglect. Neglect of police stations, neglect of our hospitals, neglect of the agriculture sector, neglect of our school infrastructure, neglect of workers' welfare, minimum wage, neglect of our youths by trapping them into an imman, by, in, in trapping them into an imman program, making them think that that's their future. And folks, the challenges, the challenges that we face are significant. But we are committed to doing our best to improve your lives. Every step we take is one step toward a better, brighter future for the people of Grenada, Caracol and Pele Matnik. And with the leadership of our Prime Minister, who we take and with the leadership of our Prime Minister, who we take our key from, we will continue to work hard to ensure that every citizens have the resources, support and opportunities they deserve. Together, we are making a difference. But guess what? The best is yet to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Minister Handy. I mean, Minister Andy Williams, thank you so much. MP for the Great South, your people loves you, they love you. Thank you so much, Minister Andy Williams, for your presentation. There is a saying in film, film writing that you should show, not tell. And I'm very appreciative and I'm sure you're appreciative as well that we can show you what we've been doing rather than just telling you. So I want to thank all our PSS to ensure that we get the job done on a daily basis, the long meetings. We want to thank you for those because you ensure that we get the job done. So thank you so much and again, thank you to Minister Andy Williams. I just want to make an announcement for MP Joseph Andal. And I want to remind him that he has to pay for these ads. The Shantimell Community Centre will be opened on April thirteenth. And it will be a day of fun with cricket, card games, dominoes, bongs in castle, face painting and lots of other activities for the children. So we're opening another community centre and as Minister Andy would say, check, right? Community centres, check, right? All right, so Shantimell Community Centre, we look forward to opening that community centre on April thirteenth. All right, so we have a final presentation from a man who has been leading our country for the last almost three years. In February, on February seventh, on February seventh, twenty twenty five, he reminded us that Grenada is great and there is greatness in every Grenadian. So we want to welcome our leader, the Honourable Deacon Mitchell, to the podium.
And I love you too. Good night, distinguished ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, and a special good night to those who are viewing online. It's a pleasure to be here. It's Wednesdays, so Wednesdays is back. If you recall, pre-election, we always had our tongue halls on Wednesdays. So we are going to keep the tradition. And I believe at a minimum, we will have quarterly national tongue halls and in between village and community tongue halls. So as the sister from the Great South said, we are here to engage with our people and to have a conversation with you. We are not here to speak to you, but to speak with you. So thank you all for coming out tonight and and being so energetic. I realise it's eight thirty one, so you've been here for two and a half hours. And I gather feeling like you're now starting, so. I want to recognise my colleague ministers as well as MP Ron Redden, who's with us on stage. And I want to obviously start by expressing a profound appreciation and gratitude for the enormous work that has been carried out by the Technical Working Group on Oil and Gas. Led by our former Minister of Finance. And I want to particularly for, for young people in Grenada appreciate and sing them out. Because sometimes we believe the only way to serve our country is to actually be in government or in office. Minister Buck is a former multiple member of parliament, if I may put it this way. He's a former Minister of Finance. He's a former leader of the National Democratic Congress. And he is here serving his country without fighting for power. So I want to thank him immensely for the, and I, and I don't want to, I don't want you to underappreciate this. They are not being paid anything other than an honurium, if we want to even call it that, a stipend. And it is an enormous amount of work with very little resources. And I therefore want to thank him, Mr George, who is the deputy chair, Mrs Spencer Joseph, who is our solicitor general in the Ministry of Legal Affairs, it's important that you, you know that, and Mr Richard Duncan. We also have one Grenadian geologist who lives in Germany. His nickname is Galo, is that the correct nickname? Galo, so those of you who know Galo, Galo is serving on the Technical Working Group all the way from Germany. Grenadian geologist. And so I welcome the presence of, I hope I, I took your name, sir, the gentleman who was elegantly dressed in the suit and tie. Who said he has over thirty years' experience in the oil and gas business. And I hope you will offer some pro bono service to assist us in supporting the Technical Working Group in its, in its, in its mandate. I said in Parliament that we are going to demystify the mystery of our oil and gas. And I think tonight you see what I meant by that. We are straightforward, we are plain, we are transparent, we tell you as it is. We don't give any false hopes or expectations. This is too important an issue for us to play games with. And so you will expect that the Technical Working Group from time to time will come to you, the public, and brief you on the work it is doing, the challenges it's facing, what the expectations are, the roadmap, so that you are clear on what it is we are doing. As the gentleman who's been frustrated for the last sixty years indicated, we need to make sure that whatever we do, it's not for us, it's for the next generation of Grenadians. And as Mr Buck said, even if we found the gas or the oil today, it will take four to six years to get it out. And therefore, four to six years will probably be another decade. And it's ready for the young lady who's sitting at the front row here and her generation to benefit from whatever resources Grenada may have for the, the oil and gas. And I want to assure us that if we are level headed and if we are prudent and if by the grace of God, we are blessed with commercial quantities of oil and gas, that we have ample experience of what to and what not to do in terms of managing oil and, and gas resources. So I can assure you that as long as this administrator is in office, we will be prudent in doing so. I, I will be brief tonight because we want to give you the opportunity. Since I think there's probably an excess of five hundred of you in the, in the room yet tonight. We want to give you the opportunity, obviously, to take the mic and to ask questions or make comments or recommendations or suggestions or raise issues that you may have. But I just want to make a couple of announcements. The first announcement is so that you are aware, today is the twenty sixth of March and we officially completed the budget process today. What do I mean by that? I mean, for the purpose of making law, which is what the budget process is about, our laws requires that we get parliamentary approval for the budget for the state of Grenada. So as today's date, the twenty sixth of March, twenty twenty five, the Appropriation Act twenty twenty five was passed, published in the Gazette and made into law. So we now finally have an appropriation sum of one billion nine hundred and twelve million eight hundred and seventy two thousand and fourteen East Caribbean dollars appropriated to the service of the state of Grenada for the period first January to thirty first December. And I'm announcing this because I want you to understand that the government actually has to operate by law. And if you don't have an act that authorises the state to spend and to collect during the calendar year, we actually can't do so. So we don't have the law, it's been passed and so the budget process is, is finished. And I want to thank all of the members of both the Low and Upper House for their contributions and their debates in the Senate. And I understand that in the Upper House, we also had some robust debates. And I believe we saw some young talent on display. I want to welcome the Honourable Lennox Torres Andrews. The Member of Parliament was in Andrews, South West and the Minister for Economic Development. And as he's walked in, I want to also re-announce what we announced in the budget. We are creating a new ministry. We created the MIT before and I think you've heard from the ministers' own words, the success of that ministry. We are creating a second new ministry. And that ministry is going to be led by the Honourable Lennox Andrews. So he's walked in at the right time. Now, it is the Ministry of the Blue Economy and Marine Resources. And why are we creating this ministry? And we've allocated six plus million dollars to the ministry. Grenada is an island, it is not a continent. We are not a landlocked country, we are oceanlocked country. Our geographic space is ten times larger in the ocean than the land. And if we are serious about our economic advancement, we have to pay more attention to our coast, to our marine environment. And so the time has come for us to dedicate a specific minister, a specific permanent secretary and all of the supporting staff to begin to ensure that we can conserve, preserve and sustainably use our marine resources. And so we have tasked the minister with leading that process. And PS Javan Williams from Caracol and Pele Matnik will be leading that ministry. I will not set out in detail the, the objectives of the ministry tonight in the interest of time. But we will certainly, as the ministry now has resources dedicated to it, we will certainly expect that the minister and the PS and the team will be engaging more with all the relevant stakeholders to talk about what it is we want to accomplish with that ministry. But it is absolutely vital that we take our marine environment seriously. And that we put resources to ensure that we preserve it, we conserve it, we sustainably use the resources that we have so that the next generation of Canadians can benefit from our marine sector. So that's one of the announcements that I want to make. I'm also making a second announcement on behalf of the Minister of Agriculture. And because I think the Minister of Tourism did not sufficiently emphasise it. The Meriboot Tissue Laboratory is going to be officially open tomorrow at two PM, sir? At two PM in Meriboot. And I don't want us to underappreciate the significance of this to our agriculture and food security. If you are paying attention, and I know you are, you would appreciate that trade between countries is becoming increasingly more difficult and more challenging. Grenada is importing almost ninety percent of everything. And we can start with food. We need to prioritise our own stomachs by investing in things that can grow, that can swim and that can be eaten in Grenada. We talk a lot about existential threats, and yes, the climate is one of them, but the biggest existential threat to man has always been man. We cannot assume that the world will remain peaceful, we cannot assume that there will continue to be open borders. In fact, the evidence is increasingly suggesting otherwise. And so we have to ensure that we have the scientific, technical, and laboratory resources to allow us to produce our plants, or seedlings, or cutlets, whatever is the appropriate technical word, to make sure that we can start growing more of the food that can grow in Grenada. So this is not something for us to underappreciate. The minister and the team will obviously provide a lot more details at the official handing over ceremony tomorrow, and I want to take the opportunity to thank the government and people of China for partnering with us in supporting this initiative in Meriboot. I also want to point out, Minister, I'm representing you tonight very well, but you came in the nick of time. The Minister and his team has also been engaging in producing a policy document, and I want to recognize P S Bagwan from the Ministry of Agriculture, as well as P S Jessamy from the Ministry of Economic Development, in addressing our food sensitivity issues. Now, you know, every time we have a hurricane, we have an emergency preparation, pre and post hurricane plan. We also have developed a draft, what I will call, emergency pre and post food crisis. Because the truth is, if the trade wars continue, if borders become shut, we need to know where we're getting our food from. We need to know how much food we have stored on the island, and how long it will last. And I think we know from the experience of COVID-nineteen, that if the ports in Miami are closed, and the containers don't arrive here in one week, there is virtually no food on many of the shelves in the supermarket. So we need to get to a point where, if the entire country is locked down for ninety days, we have food to survive for ninety days, or hundred and twenty days, or hundred and eighty days, as the case may be. So the minister and his team have done a draft document, we will be reviewing it, we will be discussing it with the public. The draft is initially to address what I would call an immediate crisis, but we need to consistently work on improving our food security in the medium to long term, so that if the crisis becomes more prominent, we are in a position to feed ourselves and not starve or go hungry. Don't make the mistake of thinking this is a temporary change in the world politics, and after four years, things will go back to normal. Oftentimes, temporary things become very permanent. So food security is of significant concern. The final issue I'll raise on this, so that you understand. Last Friday, Calico heads of government had an emergency meeting to discuss further challenges to trade, because the U.S. Trade Representatives have indicated that they are likely to place additional tariffs and additional charges on any Chinese-built ship entering any U.S. port. The proposed charges are as much as one million dollars for each entry into the port, or one thousand dollars per metric ton of the ship. The proposed measures include charging as much as a million or one-point-five million if you just have a Chinese ship within your fleet, or the same one thousand dollars per ton. Now, these ships are in a, oftentimes, hundreds of thousands of metric tons. Most of the ships which service the Caribbean or the Lions have anywhere between twenty-five to forty-five percent of their ships either been built in China, or actually being Chinese ships. The potential for the Caribbean, therefore, could be catastrophic. And so, members of the private sector here have already been meeting, the Caribbean Private Sector Organization has also been meeting, they met with the Calico heads of government last Friday, today, and on Monday, there are already been meetings with the U.S. Trade Representatives. The period for making protestations, if I may use that word, or lobbying, ended today. The U.S. Trade Representatives have indicated that they are likely to make their decisions as to whether they will proceed or not by the middle to third week of April, and their proposed schedule for doing whatever they plan to do is by the end of April. If this happens as proposed, it means the cost of shipping is going to increase exponentially for the Caribbean. It may very well mean some of the ships will not be able to come simply because the volumes are not large enough. So when I talk about food security, this is not a fanciful situation. As you can appreciate, the disruption to the world is not, in fact, countries like the Caribbean are not even thought of because of our size. So we need to understand that from a Calico level, from a government of Grenada level, we are paying particular attention to all of these things combined, and so we are likely to come back to you with additional measures that we may wish for your support, to make sure that we can begin to seriously boost food security within the island. To that end, the Minister for Agriculture and his team have secured a facility in La Chloë in St. David, and plans a foot to see how we can begin to support our agro-processors with giving them access to the plant and to equipment, so that we could begin again to extend the shelf life of a lot of the raw materials that we throw away and that we waste. We also visited what was the Win Fresh Juice and Pulping Facility at Las Vegas, which has now been bought from the receiver by a Grenadian family business. They did a demonstration of the equipment, both in terms of ice cream and the pulping of Gospo. We also visited Mr. Antoine Woodman, who is a renowned scientist, businessman, and we also toured his facility. Why am I saying all those things? I'm saying all those things because we have to support and encourage more of our citizens to support the local agro-processors, because they are producing food for you, made in Grenada, by the, by Grenadians, for consumption. And so if we don't on our own stop altering our consumption habits, then somebody's going to alter it for you. And so we need to see the potential crisis as an opportunity for us to significantly change and support keeping more of our own money within the country and circulating within the country. So these are, I know we were having a very good time when Minister Williams was speaking, and I might be sobering up us a little, but life is also about sobriety and about confronting some of those challenges that we face with planning, with foresight, and then with the appropriate action to make sure that we won't get caught with our pants down or left behind. So it's important for all of us, you know, instead of the panna cura, there's Gospo, there's orange, there's lime, there's sea moss, there's a lot of sea moss, right? And so we have to make sure that we start training our young children in particular to eat and drink the things that we throw away and we waste oftentimes in Grenada. So the food security is a significant issue that we need to pay attention to. And so the efforts to revive livestock in Grenada is also part of that. The focus on the marine sector is part of that, to make sure that we can, you know, we essentially are still selling our fresh fish just like that. Yes, virtually no agro-processing or fishing Grenada, none, we don't even make fish sticks. So there's significant opportunities, and we want to encourage, obviously, the private sector as well to invest more in ensuring that we can have food security within the island, and of course, the government is prepared to continue supporting the business sector in this regard. I will conclude by saying, and I think it's important to say, because oftentimes we hear a lot of talk about things happen. Now, the Minister for Agriculture, and I've only spoken for the most part about one topic, distributed in excess of thirty-two million dollars to farmers between Hurricane Barrel and the end of the year. I want to put that in context, the entire budget for agriculture for twenty twenty-five is thirty-two million dollars. So in a couple of months, the entire budget of the Ministry of Agriculture for twenty twenty-five was given directly to farmers in Grenada by this government. Now, and that is on top of all of the other things that the Ministry of Agriculture is doing in agriculture. The land is still there, it hasn't gone anywhere, Grenada hasn't gotten smaller. And so we need to encourage each other to plant and use the land we have, from our backyards to a lot of the idle lands, to all the estates that are just sitting there. There is not just opportunity to feed ourselves, there's opportunity to actually make a lot of money. Guyana is asking me for nutmegs. They want all nutmegs, they want to process it, they want to do this, they want to do that. The markets are there. Guyana is the fastest-growing economy probably in the world, they can consume almost anything that we can produce. We now have direct flights between Grenada and Guyana. We are importing sand from Guyana, and the vessels are going back empty. So there are opportunities for us to put things on the vessel to be sold in Guyana. So I want us to appreciate that we don't just engage in hype and glitz and glamour, and they say we like to always do nice presentations, drone and all kinds of stuff. But we also deal with the serious sober issues that we need to treat with, and we do so openly and transparently. We will continue working with our own private sector to look at how we can address the risk that is posed by the tariffs and the penalties or fines or additional costs that might be associated with shipping. And I've already begun exploring the potential for discussions with airlines, to see whether or not, if the taxes are on the ships, whether it's an opportunity for us to get cargo into Grenada via air freight, because we obviously, a plane could fly from one place to the next directly, without necessarily going to an American port, if it comes to that. So we'll obviously continue the dialogue with the private sector here, and we will brief the nation as and when required in terms of the updates. We are hoping good sense will prevail, and this will not happen, but I think we've seen in the last two months, as I say, common sense isn't always that common. I want to just conclude, because, on giving an additional announcement, there's no question we are struggling with finding good labor in the construction industry in Grenada. It has been made more challenging by the damage caused by Hurricane Barrel. And you can still go to Calico and PT Martinique, and you see that there are still a lot of roofs that have not been repaired. We've got to rebuild schools, we've got to rebuild health centers, and there are a lot of infrastructure work that the country needs. The St. Andrews Anglican Primary School, Minister for Education, right, construction is expected to commence shortly. We expect construction of the St. David's Catholic Secondary School to commence shortly. We all know the state of the roads, the bridges, the police stations, the health centers, all of that requires construction workers that is in short supply. So we have discussed with the Honorable Attorney General and Minister for Labor that we will be asking the Cabinet to approve either the waiver of work permits, or significant reduction in the fees of work permits for construction workers to be imported into the country to support the construction effort that we need in Grenada. So we are putting our construction firms on notice, we are putting our small and medium-sized contractors on notice, of course, we want to make sure that you're importing proper and skilled labor, so there will still be some vetting, but we will do everything to expedite this process and to make it more feasible, so that we can actually get a lot of these projects undertaken and completed in a timely manner. So again, we're doing this because we've heard the calls and the cries of persons in the construction industry for more support to make sure that we can accelerate the pace of delivery in construction. I want to conclude by indicating that on Friday at four P M, is that right, P S McCulloch? Yes, at four P M, we will have the official handing over of the police headquarters on the carnage to the Commissioner, to the Commissioner and members of the Royal Grenada Police Force. I met briefly with the Commissioner, and I think he has indicated that his men are delighted and happy with this, and I again want to emphasize, because I think I said it in Parliament, I think all my life, I think the police headquarters has been on the fort. All my life, we've always said, it seemed like both a security risk, because it's one way in, one way out, and it was not an appropriate place, given the nature of the fort, and as we said, the fact that it is one of the most spectacular sites in Grenada certainly ought to be used for recreational, tourist, artistic, and other festivities, and the restoration is well on the way, we anticipate that they should be completed by the summer of twenty twenty-five. And again, as the Minister said, it's one of the projects that we rescued because it was lagging significantly behind. But I want to emphasize that we are not just about infrastructure, in fact, to the contrary, we are more about people than we are about things. And so we are not only opening a new police headquarters, but specifically to the lawmen, the budgetary allocation for police in twenty twenty-five is seventy-eight million dollars. And as I indicated during the budget, as a result of the pay and grade exercise, which was outstanding and not done since nineteen ninety-four, I graduated from Presentation College in nineteen ninety-four, so that's how long ago that was. The average pay of a police constable in Grenada is going to go up by seven hundred dollars. So when they talk about whether we love our people or not, I want the men and women who serve us and who keep us safe to appreciate that we put the people's money back into the hands of the people. Thank you very much, have a good night.
Thank you, Prime Minister, for your presentation and updates from your ministry. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, we want to take some questions from our audience, and your questions, ooh, they're popping up like popcorn. So just make your way to the aisles, to the aisle, and we will take your questions. Ministers, all ministers, you're prepared, I know you're prepared to respond, and if you, I don't know if anybody have additional questions for the Technical Working Group, they're also here. So we're going to do this as quickly as possible, and again, let's not tell stories, just jump straight to the question or your comment. Thank you very much. So we have two mics, we have one in the first half and one in the second half. All right, so I saw a gentleman in white first, so you may proceed, and I will take the lady in pink.
Yes, good night again. And I'm, sorry, I ended the first session, and I'm starting the second session. When I left St. Patrick today, I'd already formulated my question that I was... When I left Saint Patrick today, I'd already formulated my question that I was, well, a suggestion that I wanted to make. A lot of it the Prime Minister addressed in relation to, and please don't follow me, I have no interest in going to the U S. So I can say there is a madman in the White House. His actions and the action of his government, as the Prime Minister rightly said, would have a lot of effects on the Caribbean and Grenada in particular. I want to make a suggestion to the government of Grenada. I know our Prime Minister is forward thinking and some of these suggestions, the statement that he made has confirmed that tonight, but I want him to go a bit further, because this is a Grenada situation. I am suggesting, Mister Prime Minister, that it does not include just ministers of government and P Ss. I'm asking and suggestion, suggesting that you spread it a bit further, make it a lot more inclusive by including persons, you and others few, that can learn to a discussion nationally to come up with solutions to curb what is coming. I am foreseeing a tighter waiver there. And I believe if we come together collectively as a people and discuss strategies of addressing what is being out there, it will make us a lot more stronger. That is my suggestion tonight on all of this crazy thing Donald Trump is attending. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your contribution, sir. Lady in pink, you may proceed.
Yes, good evening to all, our dear Prime Minister and our dear MP Minister Andy Williams. I am a proud resident of Gunkai Hill. And I stand here to testify of what Minister Andy had said concerning that hill. I remember time passed when we, the residents, have to be walking down in the muddy road. Sometime we have to have an extra change of clothes, because sometimes we fall down when we're going down. We have to be putting an, putting plastic bag in our feet and all of these things. And then one day, took five women, we came out five o'clock in the morning and we decided we're gonna start digging that road for ourselves. We use our fox, our pet, and we started digging. There were no lights, we coming out with our such light, and you know, five o'clock in the morning, them time very dark. And we started off and then we went to the minister that was running the salt at the time and we said, we need a road. They sent engineers, the engineer said, you can't get no road there, it's only a footpath. And today, Minister Andy Williams gave us a good road. So we wanna say hip, 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 hooray! To Minister Andy. And also, we'll be opening the road on Sunday, please God, so we are inviting as many of us can come up to celebrate that time with us and we no more walking in darkness, we have lights now. Thank you, Minister Andy. And then another point I would like to make again, that I see a lot of emphasis is being given on the youths and the youths and the youths, but we senior citizens, I think we need to be recognized too. Yes, because many of the time, you know, when you pass fifty-five years, you hardly get work in the workplace, especially in the hotel industry and such like, they think that you're too old, you can't do anything. So there are many strong able-bodied senior citizens, I am one of them, and I am seeking employment, because you know, you have mental stress in the workplace, they look down on you, especially the younger ones, they look at you, you're old already, why don't go, and what you're doing here and stuff like that. So my dear Prime Minister, I want you to do something for our senior citizens. We are everybody, we can work and we want to go forward, not backward. I thank you.
Thank you for your contribution. Proceed, thanks.
I just want to say good night to our beloved Prime Minister and Ministers. And to this, I want to address this to the Minister of Agriculture. Now, in Grenada, we have a lot of things. For instance, by me, I have two tamarans tree, I have to cut one, because I cannot get sale for the tamarans every year, by year, it's the under tree and it's spoiled. I want to know what is going on, if we could do something like what Maurice Bishop had done, the agro industries, where we can cannot things and bottle of things and sell it to Grenada. Alright, because this is very important. Mangos are spoiling, ghosts boys are spoiling, people are cutting the trees because they cannot get sale. Okay, to the Minister of Health, I want to say congratulations to you, Mister Telesford. A lot of people here maybe not popular, because I know a lot of people speak about you, but they don't know the wonderful job you are doing. Health is very important and sometimes I have to speak to them and say, no, in my area where you represent, don't do that, go and speak to the Minister, he's very nice, because I speak to him a couple of times already. Alright, so I want to congratulate you and uplift you. Alright, Minister Andy Williams, my good friend, it's you guy, man, don't forget. You're my boy, man, see you. Alright.
Thank you, citizen, for your contribution. Minister Andrew, did you want to contribute?
So thank you and a very pleasant good evening to all. First of all, my apology for my lateness tonight. I was attending a very important meeting of Ministers of Economic Development and Planning of the O E C S in Saint Vincent. So as regards to your question, I, in fact, Prime Minister would have mentioned that just last week, Friday, we visited the Lacalum Plant. Our intention there is to create an agro processing plant where our agro processors can go there and process the agricultural products. So the tamaran that you have wasting, that tamaran can now be processed into a final product. It would be placed in a nice little plastic bag, it will be labeled and it will be available for sale. The equipment for the establishment and for the creation of the plant, the equipment, they're all here. We are doing some external work on the building, but we are also doing some internal work on the building as well, so also have the building ready in a couple of months' time. Your technical work for your processing will be done at the Portuguese Chemical Laboratory, they will help you with your technical composition. And once the technical formula is prepared, you will go to the plant and we will process whatever agro processing that you want to get done, it will be done there for you. So we're going to inform you not too far from now, in the next few months, when the plant is up and running and the arrangements that we are going to put in place, so that you can come there and have your agro processing done there for you. And that is not just for tamaran, it is multipurpose, it is multipurpose. The plant has been so designed that it can agro process many agricultural products. So it can include guava, not, not, not nutmegs yet, but guava, a porpo, mangoes, all the plants, all the cubs that we have wasting now, they would be processed at that agro processing plant into a final product and may available for sale. Thank you.
Thank you, Minister, for your response. We take our next question, you may proceed.
Good night to the head table, especially to our dear Prime Minister, Commonwealth Lieutenant Mitchell, Commander in Chief. And also to the honorable man of the side, Commonwealth Andy Williams. Bless the night to each and everyone in the island and in the audience and on the listening Pertaining to the oil and gas issues, I heard a lot of talk about acquiring the documents, securing it and so on and so forth. But I read much about legislation and laws to make, to hold people accountable for those things that have been happening in our country. It's time that we legislate documents or laws to have to hold people accountable, because too much of things is happening in this country over the past twenty-six years and a lot of people get away and been set free and no accountability. And we can't have this thing going on and on and on. We have to take a stand, we have to take a decision and we have to protect the interests of the upcoming generation, let us not go along that same road. Secondly, I heard a lot of talk and plans on the way forward for the development of our country. But we have to start thinking down the next fifteen, twenty years and start identifying and educating our youths, our children at school from kindergarten come right up, to take charge, to be leaders, to be managers, to be engineers, to be doctors and to take the charge of those things and let us not start going out and bringing people. So let us start that, that, that plan from now. So in the near future, that we can have those people here, well-developed and well-grown men, and even exporting them to other countries where they are, they will be needed. So I would like to see that fifteen, twenty-year plan, starting from the kindergarten come right up to the primary school, secondary school, into the college and universities, so we can take charge and be leaders of all and all aspects of our nation development. And not only just work about leaders. And also, I look at the Kianijin Boulevard and there's great potential in that area. What I would like to say, I know maybe it's talked about on many occasions, but what we can develop that area into a recreational and a relaxing comfort area whereby we can dredge that old lagoon road, dump it, fill it and have a nice walkway where we can have boats and so forth, selling different products, different foods, drinks or whatever, and the people can come there and relax at any time and enjoy that whole scenery, you know, put a nice boat dock with wheels, if commerce will come and show the lines, you know, and fish. And let us make it more a green space-like, you know, with different boats, as I said, selling different stuff. And that could also be transferred into the Carnage area. You know, so there's an idea that can be developed, you know, both for tourism purposes and also for entertainment and relaxation with families and so forth, where you can go there and just reminisce and chat and be comfortable. So that is my three points this afternoon. Thank everyone.
Thank you, thank you for your contribution. Minister for Infrastructure, M I T, Tourism, they're taking notes, even Health should be taking notes as well. And Agriculture, we need some green spaces as well. Thank you. Alright, we'll take our next contribution, proceed.
Good night to the head table and to everyone for the second time. This one is for the Minister of Health. You have a lot of elderly citizens in this country, especially visiting the eye clinic. And when they drop this thing in your eyes, sometime it give you real trouble. Coming out from the building, you getting this sun straight to your face. And some children so busy these days, they don't have time for their parents to even go in the clinic with them. So I don't know what you could do to assist this, to solve this problem, because you remember you coming down a step and sometime let me pray and hope one of these days they can slip and fall and damage yourself, I wish you could do something. The next part, so many workers, especially in the general hospital, you're working with, in a team and the same people you work with look to rob you. So I would like you, if you could put some safe, so the workers could have place to lock their, their bag when they come to work, because sometimes idols passing it too, because when they rob them sometime, they don't even care if you have money to go home, they take all your money. So I'm suggesting that you could make little kit with locks for the workers and put more cameras, so you could monitor them, because you don't know what they in people mind. The next point is to our dear Prime Minister. It's so good to interact with your Prime Minister. Mister Prime Minister, I'll give you about three lap round the playing field base and edge. I in this country for a long time and I have never seen, especially a group of young people, have the heart and the mind and to give love for the people of this country. I want to applaud you. And I want to say that you break a record in this country. Maurice Bishop did it in four and a half years and you come and you do it in two years. Mister Prime Minister, I have children, I have grandchildren and most time we beat up on the young people. Sometime we say they idling on the bus terminal, they getting themselves in trouble, but what we do to help them come out of this situation? And when I see today, I see you, Mister Prime Minister, handing out cricket gears for the young children in primary school, I feel good. When I see lighting in Tempe playing ground and I coming up on the bus and you seeing young fellas dropping out and who say they playing in the second row, the second march on the plane, I feel so good, because when they come from school and they know they have to go and play football, no time to waste on the bus terminal. So I feel happy to see that you take them out from, from this situation, they could go and exercise their brain and they will stay away from getting themselves in problem. I say thank you for this movement, for these children. When I, when I see you opening bus door, I tell you, I have some age and I never see that, I could see that you have love for the young people of this country. And I just want to say to the parents, just work with your government, there is future for our children in this country. So continue, Mister Prime Minister. When I hear you say, I want to say thank you for rescuing us from these people, because, Mister Prime Minister, I want to say thanks to Kim Jones, because when they come, when they come with the lies, same time Kim Jones beat them down with the lies and make us So Mister Prime Minister, I'm happy, I never see a Prime Minister come in this country and raise salary for, for the opposition, give them how much money to help their community. You come and you do it, I feel so good. One thing I don't like, Mister Prime Minister, I hear in, I hear in talk, I don't know if it's true, that you expect to give them a vehicle. They, they have their vehicle. have the vehicle, let them use the, let them use the vehicle. I just suggesting, I can't stop you, but I would never feel happy to know that happened. And lastly, before I go, I want to say to the Minister of Health, February, go and make one year. Bring a letter in your office, and up to now, I ain't hear nothing. So I just want to know, they can't say I didn't give them because I bring it with my hand and I have the photocopy. The fourth of February, go and make one year. So I would like you to look into this situation and see if you get the, the letter and give me a answer, please. Thank you.
Ready to start now?
Should I go ahead?
Afternoon.
Okay. One sec, please. Ma'am.
Afternoon, everyone.
All right, ma'am, I just want to clarify, does that letter relate to the bathroom facility?
Yes.
Right. I did not get that letter, but remember, I spoke to you, and it is going to be done. I was just waiting for the budget to be cleared so that we can start that process. All right.
Thank you, Minister. We have another contribution from Lady in the aisle. You may proceed.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good evening. Can you speak in the mic, please?
Good afternoon, everyone.
Evening.
I want to be very brief. I know what the country inherited, as the minister speak, on the health, about the health, hospital-wise, we know. But in the meantime, we also know that we getting state-of-the-art and everything. But in the meantime, I'm just begging, if we could have some things in the hospital still, so that we could get the use, because I'm already a senior citizen. Instead of sweeping the children generation, in the meantime, we could get a little scan, a little something in the hospital still, like all-inclusive walking still. So I can get the benefit of it also. And the next thing is Privacy Act. I feel, if not in the hospital, the police force, you know, we need privacy. People is not private. I don't know. I've been listening to a lot of conversation. And with Privacy Act that enforce, people losing their job and things, a lot of people might go keep, because you leave your home, you go to the hospital. I did not come in your house. Something happened to me there. Before I reached back in the village, I could hear somebody else. I mean, it's a lot. I mean, this government, they're younger, they are children, some of them, but they, they, they undergoing a lot and know and listen. But we need something in the meantime. And as Danny said, accountability. Oh, my God. In the hospital, I mean, all about across, but in the hospital especially. I mean, sometime we not perfect, people will die. But I mean, come out, don't save the state at two dollars and just push the person, drop the flow. You send the person down and that's it. You know, you've been blocked all wrong. This one, just to sign a paper, you can't get a paper signed to go to the court. It's a lot. It's a lot. And the government young, they are young. So I hope everything work. Accountability. People taking account for their wrongdoing.
Thank you, citizen, for your contribution. And we take our final contribution.
Pleasant good night, Honorable Prime Minister, Deacon Mitchell. Well, when I look at the crowd here and the support from the people throughout the triland state, I realize it's not a one-term government anymore. It's a one-hundred-year government. My good friend, Mister Williams, pleasant good night to be in your constituency tonight. Yes. Mister Prime Minister, two things I want to deal with. I spoke to the Attorney General on numerous occasion pertaining to my business. The government owe me some money, and I'm getting problems to get the money. And it's not to say I don't come, maybe, maybe you guys want me to come and ask for handouts in the ministry. I, I need what is mine. Because the Attorney General told me that she do not know the lawsuit number. I sent it to her. I have a copy of the judgment. Then I supposed to go back to her lawyer again after I go through the court proceedings and all of that. I would like, I would like the, the thing to be rectified. And the next thing is, look, I just get demand notices and so for property taxes. And the government did some work recently, and actually, well, you know, I don't like to discriminate, to be calling people N N P and whatnot, but there's this N N P contractor that take all the materials and store it on my property and telling me I can't move him, and he doing government work. And he actually go and build on the property, and I'd say that government acquire, because government have the right to acquire any property they want for public purposes. But the government didn't acquire, and go and he build on the place and put a rail in, and I'm not satisfied. And I don't want to sue this government. This government means well, and I feel we could have a dialogue and we could resolve the problem, you know. And, you know, I want to congratulate the government for the plans they have for the country. I also want to congratulate the government for the bold step they take to restore Karakoo and Peti Martnik. I has been going up to Karakoo for about two months, every day, back and forth, because Mister Bailey, Clinton Bailey. I also want to congratulate this guy because he have done a great job in terms of mobilizing the boats and, you know, food stuff and things. So Mister Bailey is a man I want, you know, that the government need to have dialogue with somebody like Clinton Bailey, because this guy could mobilize, he could get things done. And what else can I say? Just enjoy the next hundred years forward, because we ain't going nowhere. And I hope nobody fall down tonight, because people falling down. I know if they throwing down themselves, or they falling down because they have bad feelings. Anyway, guys, congratulations, and go forward with good works.
Thank you, citizen, for your contribution. If anyone wants a little pick-me-up, a little sugar, we do have refreshments on the outside. So thank you. And our final contribution from the lady in red, and then we wrap up for this evening.
A pleasant good night to everyone and to our Prime Minister and the ministers. So far, the work that you all have done, I guess you all need a round of applause. And there is always room for improvement. I'm here with some concerns with the Royal Grenada Police Force, some of the members, especially the youngsters. They, to me, they tend to target young people. I had an incident recently with my son. He purchased a car from a police officer. He went to the stadium to get it inspected. And from there, within the stadium and between keep left, an officer stopped him. He explained to him that he went to inspect his vehicle, but he was still given a charge for the tint on his class. When he showed him the paper that they gave him, that everything was okay, the police officer told him that you have friends in the force who does do things for people on the side. And this is something that I, that police officers should use the discretion. And if there is proof to sustain what you are saying, that they should look at it and stop judging people. That's another thing. Another aspect is, for me, is education. I may look as though I'm sixteen, but I'm not. I've been having issues with ministry, with some of my children in subject areas for quite a while. Any child that is in Form Five is entitled to do or sit at least five subjects. In some cases, children are being marginalized by the school system, by a group of teacher that is in charge of selecting who should do what and who cannot do what. Some teachers say that they have too much children in the class, they cannot take on more students. Another incident is where school events. If the school takes your child from, the school to attend, to represent the school, that they should ensure that your child reach back home safely regardless to what. There was an Western game recently, and some children was found basically walking home after that event. And I went to address it, and I was not satisfied. And the things that I got was like, let's leave it as a deadlock. And I'm not satisfied with that. Honestly, as a parent, I couldn't go and sleep. My child couldn't come home at a certain time, and I did not have a phone. My phone wasn't working. So I was concerned. I went to the school, and I was not satisfied with the response.
All right. Thank you, citizen. I believe Minister for Education would like to respond. And then Senator Claudia Joseph, she'll respond to the previous comment. Oh, no, no longer. All right. So Minister, and then we wrap up for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Press sec. Ma'am, as a parent, I genuinely appreciate the concern that you've shared in relation to students not being allowed to write the number of subjects that they can write, and writing less than five. It's a concern that we have recognized and that we have been, we are, we are intent on treating with and ensuring that students are allowed to write at least the number of subjects that will see them qualified to go to the next level. But that's an ongoing challenge that we have. In terms of your children getting back home after school-coordinated activities, I know that the standard practice is that once you are part of a school-organized activity officially, that you organized by the school, where transportation is organized by the school, the practice is that you are dropped back home as close as possible to home. And for, for ages, that's been the practice. However, I'm not sure we could always verify that every student goes to activities as organized by the school, which could be an area that we both have to collaborate on in terms of parents and the school. But I know as a practice, the standard is, once you go with the school as part of an officially organized activity and transportation organized by the school, the school will take the responsibility to drop you back home or as close as it's possible to get you there safely. And I know that happens. But those anomalies, we will continue to work to ensure that less of them happen within our system. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator, the Honorable David Andrew, for your response. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank you so much for attending our first town hall meeting for 2025. I want to say special thanks to our presenters tonight, the Technical Working Group. Give them a round of applause for all the work they have been doing in the exploration of Grenada's hydrocarbon potential. I want to say special thanks to the members of Cabinet who presented this evening, the Honorable Deacon Mitchell, Prime Minister, Senator the Honorable Adrian Thomas, Minister Andy Williams, and Minister Philip Telesford. Thank you so much for presenting. Special thanks to the Cabinet, the other members of Cabinet, the Cabinet Secretary, all the Permanent Secretaries, Representatives, ambassadors, and to you, our audience and members of the Great South. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. I want to say thanks to the thousand-plus viewers online, and I know we've gone up to about twenty-thousand views by now. So thank you so much, and look forward to the next town hall meeting, which will be held on the last Wednesday of April. So look out for the venue, and we hope to see you all back again, or if not, back in person online. So have a great evening, everybody. Get home safely. Thank you.